Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm School Committee Chair Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask all of my colleagues to unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Present.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez? Ms. Lopera? Ms. Mercer? Ms. Palango Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Tran?
Present.
Mr. O'Neill?
Present.
Ms. Robinson?
Present.
We do have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the School Committee's webpage and on YouTube. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the Committee's webpage at bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee under the May 25th meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The Committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Veriano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. After the interpreters finish introducing themselves and providing Zoom instructions, we will activate the interpretation icon, the globe, at the bottom of your screen. Click the icon to select your language preference. Will our Spanish interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Espanol?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. School Committee members, distinguished guests, my name is Juan Bernal. And one of the simultaneous Spanish interpreters, whom along with interpreter Randall Dominguez, will provide simultaneous interpretation tonight. Spanish interpreter Gabriela Herrera will provide consecutive interpretation for a school committee member, Spanish-speaking Ms. Rafaela Polanco Garcia. Muy buenas noches para todos. Bienvenidos a la reunión de hoy. Mi nombre es Juan Bernal. Soy uno de los interpretes asignados para la reunión de hoy, la cual va a ser transmitida en varias lenguas. Para accesar el servicio de interpretación, localicen, por favor, el icono redondo del globo terráqueo que aparece en la parte inferior de sus pantallas y seleccione español como su idioma de preferencia. De igual manera, si se están conectando de una tableta, de un iPhone o de un iPad, busquen los tres puntos que aparecen en la parte superior de sus pantallas, seleccione español como su idioma de preferencia. Bienvenidos, gracias. Thank you very much. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Well, our Haitian Creole interpreters, please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Haitian Creole.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Joseph Taylor, Haitian Creole interpreter. C'est moi, avec nadie qui a pas sur l'interprétation pour après-midi. Nous demandez-vous si vous besoin entrez une conversation. Ou un globe, envoyez-le, ou cliquez, ou partez dans la conversation. Et vous pouvez poser des questions, pas hésiter. Entrez dans la conversation, posez toutes questions. Nous souhaitions déjà bonne chance. Merci beaucoup. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, our Cabo Veriano interpreter, please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cabo Veriano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Josiane, and Armando and I will be your simultaneous Cape Verdean interpreters for tonight. Buena tarde. Mi nombre es Josiane. Junta mente con Armando, nos sabes ser nuestros interpretes, pes no tilly. Para que nos tengan acceso a interpretación simultánea, nos clican en el icono de globo en la parte inferior de nuestros ecrán. En nuestros ecrán selecciona interpretación y Cabo Veriano. Si nos está usando un telemóvil, nos clican en aquel tres puntinho que está famor en la language y después nos ponemos selecciona interpretación Cabo Veriano. Obrigada y buena tarde. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, our Cantonese interpreters, please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cantonese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Anna and Terry will be your Cantonese interpreter for the meeting tonight. 大家应该见到地球仪是这样。现在去到广东话的翻译频道。今天晚上是我同Terry 是你的广东话同声翻译员。可能会到这个频道的。应该见，多谢晒。Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, our Mandarin interpreters, please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Mandarin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 大家好，我是您的普通话翻译。那么今天是由Maple 我们会半个小时一换。你点击之后选普通话就可以。好，一会儿见。祝您今天晚上过得愉快。Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Well, our Vietnamese interpreters, please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Vietnamese.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vi. You and I will be your Vietnamese interpreter for tonight's meeting. 您叫贵妃，我姓V。请你们把名字念给我。当找到答案的时候， 就点 Vietnamese 语言。以便可以听到翻译的回声。谢谢。
Thank you. Our American Sign Language interpreters are Katie McFarlane, Sharon Mendez, and Heather Hanson. Thank you all for assisting us this evening. Thank you to all of the BPS staff behind the scenes who also provide support for our virtual meetings to run smoothly. We will now activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screens. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for public comment closed today at 4:30. Please make sure that you are signed into Zoom under the same name you use to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your consideration. Before we move on to into the business of tonight's meeting, I want to say a few words about the recent gun violence in our country. Just days after the horrific murders of innocent people in a supermarket in Buffalo, New York, our country is reeling from the massacres of schoolchildren and their teachers in Uvalde, Texas. I want to thank the superintendent for immediately reaching out to BPS families with resources to support our students who so desperately need us to wrap our arms around them right now. I know she will have more to say about school safety in her superintendent's report later this evening. We speak about these mass shootings being tragic and incomprehensible, and yet we find ourselves in this situations time and time again. Our children and teachers must feel safe at school. Our parents must have peace of mind. I'm hopeful that after years of divisive rhetoric and a life-changing pandemic, we can find common ground on this issue and work together to create a safer country for our children. Please join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of the victims of these senseless shootings. Thank you. The Committee will begin this evening by holding a hearing on the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year 2022 to 2023. Under state law, each year the Committee must vote by June 1st whether the Boston Public Schools will admit non-residents. Do we have any speakers to testify on the school choice issue? Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. We have one speaker signed up, Sharon Hinton. However, she's not signed into the meeting. So therefore, we have no speakers for the school choice hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. The Committee will receive the superintendent's recommendation on this matter, discuss the issue, and take a vote later this evening. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the hearing on the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year 2023. The Committee will then move into our regular meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Would you please call the roll, Ms. Sullivan?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez? Ms. Lopera? Ms. Palango Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move into the regular business of our meeting, beginning with the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 11th, 2022, School Committee meeting as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Cardad Hernandez? Ms. Lopera? Ms. Palango Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Brenda Casellis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for joining us tonight. I have just a few updates that I want to share before we dive into this evening's presentations. First, I want to also, Madam Chair, acknowledge that we are here tonight with very heavy hearts. Yesterday's tragic events and loss of precious life illustrate the seriousness of the work ahead for all of us. Nothing is more important than the safety of our children and ensuring that they get to be children free of worry and adult problems. Children only get one childhood. They should not have to be scared to walk to school or be bullied or to witness gun violence or outright killing in our country. We just have to do better by them. We must pass common sense gun laws and craft special programs to get guns off our streets and out of the hands of those who would do harm. The safety and well-being of all of our students and staff are on all of our minds, not just today, but every single day and night. I know tragic incidents like this make us all reflect on our own schools, our students, and our staff. I want to take a moment to reassure families, staff, and students. This is scary, but there are a number of things that we in BPS have done and have in place to keep our students safe. We've have changed our school access and controls and so that all doors are locked and people cannot come in the building unless they are let in by staff. We've added tap cards to schools so we know who's coming in our buildings. We're making investments to upgrade our PA systems, and many schools have radios to support communications if needed. For each classroom, we've just finished a review of all of our internal doors to ensure that they can lock. Earlier this year, we did a safety audit with each of our school leaders to understand what their safety needs are, and each school has a safety plan. As a result of that audit, we've been working this year and will continue to work throughout the summer to upgrade things like lighting and security cameras. Just last week, we reviewed with our school leaders our safety protocols and when to call the police for emergency services. And we work closely with Boston Police, who patrol our school neighborhoods regularly. I want to also acknowledge that there have been several concerning incidents reported in the press at some of our schools. As a reminder, we have over 120 schools, and they are doing incredible things every day and providing for a safe environment for our children where they can learn. And there have been some schools that have had some troubling incidents. In each case, our staff has acted immediately and taken appropriate actions outlined in our protocols and our code of conduct. We know that our staff are frequently required to make quick decisions under rapidly evolving circumstances. And I'm so grateful for our school leaders and the staff on the ground and our school safety officers who keep our students safe each and every day. We will continue to support our schools to ensure that appropriate notification and safety protocols are followed so that we can provide a safe and nurturing environment for all of our students and our staff. We know that learning is not possible if a young person is afraid of what will happen in school or if they experience violence in or on the way to school or on their way home from school. And we're committed to providing our students with a quality education, the opportunities that they need in a safe learning environment, free from any violence, harassment, bullying, discrimination, hate crimes. We're all students, feel like they are community members, and we're all students treat each other with the respect and the appreciation of our rich diversity in which we bring to our schools. We also sent a letter home to families and staff with additional resources to help guide any conversations or questions that students may have, and will continue to work with our school-based staff, our social workers, our incredible counselors and psychologists and school leaders and educators to support our students. Just this morning, the mayor and I announced several BPS and citywide efforts to coordinate services for our students and families to address community-wide concerns around safety and to ensure that we have a safe summer. These include summer school, activities with Boston After School and Beyond, summer jobs, a strength and partnership with our BCYF centers, and the relaunching of Operation Homefront, which is a youth diversionary program that works with our faith community and BPD to ensure that families have deep relationships with our connections, our homeschool connections, and that they're getting support and the resources that they need to support their children who are in need of support. I'd like to switch now to a bit of good news. As I transition now to other news in the district, I want to start by highlighting a great example of our community-building work between our schools, BPS Safety Services, and the Boston Police. Tech Boston, along with BPS Safety Services and the Boston Police Department, had and hosted a Positive Vibe basketball game, where more than 150 students and 30 citywide police officers and BPS safety specialists took part in a friendly students versus officers basketball game. The police officers and safety specialists took the W this time, but students had fun, enjoyed pizza, and even received commemorative T-shirts and swag bags. There was a poetry contest where student winners were awarded a $100 gift card. It was a great event, and it was great to see everyone enjoy themselves and the company of others within the larger community. And this is exactly the type of community-building activities that our young people need, and we look forward to in planning more of these events this summer and next year with other BPS schools. I'm also proud to announce, which we announced last week, that City Fresh Foods in Roxbury, a Roxbury-based, black-owned food service company, is going to be providing our breakfast, lunch, and after-school meals. They'll provide fresh snacks and summer meals for all of Boston Public Schools. This has been a long time in the making. All meals are going to be freshly made in City Fresh's Roxbury production facility with nutritious ingredients, including locally sourced food. This partnership will help keep our students healthy and well so that they can continue to learn throughout this school day, as we know that our children cannot learn when they are hungry. This partnership is so special because not only will our students have nutritious meals, but they'll also have access to wide range of culturally relevant foods from business that represents the heart and soul of Roxbury. The wonderful thing about this company too is they employ so many of our families and parents and community members. I want to thank Mayor Wu and her team again for their continued support and commitment to BPS and the investment in our students' health. I look forward to this partnership with City Fresh Foods so that we can continue nurturing the future leaders of Boston. I'm also excited to share the mayor's announcement of the Green New Deal for BPS. On May 12th, Mayor Wu announced a $2 billion plan to overhaul BPS facilities, including new construction and renovation projects, as well as district-wide upgrades. I'm excited about what this plan will mean for so many of our students, staff, and families. The way a school building looks and feels when a student walks in has such a big impact on the way they feel about learning. Every one of our students deserves to walk into a building that is modern, up-to-date, and well-equipped to enhance their learning environment. And just as importantly, make them feel great about the day ahead. The Green New Deal initiative will build upon the Quality Guarantee Framework that we've been advancing for the past several years, and that was included as part of the BPS FY23 budget. The Quality Guarantee is BPS's promise to our students and families that soon every school in every neighborhood will provide a standard of excellence and high quality. This baseline of services across all schools is nothing less than what parents expect and our students deserve. This investment will continue the work we're doing towards guaranteeing that all of our students receive a quality education in school buildings and classrooms that promote learning and that help them succeed, thrive, and achieve their dreams. We'll be coming to the School Committee in June to update you in more detail about the specific projects in the plan and the proposals that we will be putting forward. But we wanted to lift up this exciting $2 billion investment for our schools, students, and staff. A full community engagement process will be part of our update in June, and we look forward to your participation. I am also so excited tonight to announce that after many months of negotiations, the Boston School Drivers Union voted Tuesday night to approve a contract agreement that was reached with Transdev, Boston Public Schools' private transit contractor. Since I came to Boston, it has been a top priority of mine to get buses running on time. Part of that is providing for a fair contract for our workers and a contract that works for our students and families. This agreement is a victory for our students and our families. This contract achieved several operational changes we needed to increase our on-time bus performance and driver attendance. These also include a significant increase in pay, making us more competitive, and also several other contractual improvements for drivers and our operational changes that we at Boston Public Schools needed to improve performance. It will improve school transportation operations for more than the 22,000 students across the city of Boston that we get to school each and every day. Our school bus drivers are incredibly valued members of our community and a key strategy to providing our students with the high-quality education that they deserve. Again, I'm thankful to Mayor Wu and her administration and labor team, Transdev and their partnership, and the drivers for their ongoing commitment to providing transportation that our families depend on. I want to also thank our Transportation Department, who has done incredible work on the operations this year to improve performance. And if we were fully staffed, we would be seeing much better numbers than what we are, and they are just to be commended for their incredible work around the clock. And these operational changes that we've got in this contract are going to set our transportation team up for success this fall. I wanted to give you a quick update tonight on the progress of locating the new school communities for our Mission Hill families and students to call home next school year. We're currently on track, and as of earlier today, we have school choice information for 205 of the 209 Mission Hill students. This is incredibly important for us then to make the choices to be able to help our Mission Hill families and students get the assignments that they need. Our team is continuing to conduct outreach to each family to ensure that we have all students and their new placements accounted for. We will begin the process for assigning students next week with the goal for families to receive their notifications starting on June 10th. And lastly, I want to share an update on the DESI report. Yesterday, DESI hosted their monthly board meeting, which included an update on the follow-up district review of Boston Public Schools. And tonight, we'll have just a brief presentation to share with you on the overall timeline and overview of findings from the report. I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Superintendent of Academics Drew Eccleston, who will provide for you a little bit more detail. Dr. Eccleston?
Thank you, Superintendent. I am going to just share my screen, if that's okay. If someone who is currently sharing wouldn't mind taking down that. Thanks. Sorry. So I thought I'd begin by sharing a little bit about the timeline that got us to this point and putting all of this in some context that I think is very important. In fall of 2019, just as Superintendent Casillas was entering into the Boston Public Schools, many months before that, DESI had communicated their intention to complete an initial district review. And they conducted that initial review with many months of preparation for the district in fall of 2019. Sometime in the winter, they completed that review and submitted a report to the district. And based on that report, the city and the school district, BPS, agreed to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And that MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, had very specific focus areas that I'll get to in a moment. That, the MOU was signed on March 13th, and that's important because just four days later, the Boston Public Schools moved all of its schools to remote learning in response to COVID-19. And we think this is important context just to sort of lay the foundation for what was happening during the early days of the agreement with the Memorandum of Understanding with DESI. So as the district was responding to COVID-19 and responding to very very obviously sort of shifting protocols and guidance, both from public health officials and also from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the district was trying to create a strong foundation for possible for students. That meant that the district was serving over 7 million meals during the months of, in many cases, from March 2020 all the way to June 21, that they were hand-delivering technology to students and families, and they hand-delivered over 20,000 Chromebooks, 7,000 hotspots, and 1,000 Comcast vouchers, providing new laptops to teachers, video cameras in every classroom as we shifted to more hybrid options. And additional Chromebooks were ordered and delivered and outfitted for specific schools. We're proud that we developed a set of clear instructional expectations for blended learning. The DESI has used those materials and The, the DSE has used those materials and shared them with other school districts and we have also shared them. With school districts around the Commonwealth as well as across the nation. We leverage new platforms to support student learning. Particularly to support students during remote learning. And made investments, significant millions and millions of dollars in investments to improve. The school-based infrastructure to respond to the global pandemic. The, the agreement, the MOU. Focused on some key priorities that the Boston Public Schools proffered as very important. And then some key priorities that the Department of Elementary Secondary Education expected the BPS to work on. On the BPS side, we've identified in the current MOU. These five specific things that we're focused on. Teaching and learning in our transformation schools. Equitable access to student support through the mass core graduation requirements which this body passed. In July of 2020, I believe. 2021, I apologize. And a reduction in chronic absenteeism. Supporting students with disabilities by increasing the number of students in the least restrictive environment. And reducing the disproportionate placement of students of color in substantially separate programs. Improving the student transportation system. And improving interpretation and translation services. And develop and launch a plan to improve supports for English learners or multilingual learners. Those were the initiatives in the MOU that BPS was focused on. On the right-hand side, you can see the priorities for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They asked us and expected us to engage in a teaching and learning initiative. Through a program they call Kaleidoscope Collective for Learning. And that we would prepare a cohort of 15 BPS schools for entrance into this kaleidoscope program. They selected schools disproportionately in Region 1, which are in Charlestown and East Boston to participate in that initiative. They had a priority around equitable access to student supports by brokering partnerships for schools that do not have strong partners. They identified a priority to help BPS recruit and retain a diverse and effective educator workforce. They identified an initiative around facilities specifically with a deep focus on improving facilities such as student bathrooms. And to develop an earned autonomy model for the Boston Public Schools. Which they have changed now to focus more on continuous improvement rather than an earned autonomy model. So these were the, the focus areas for the current memorandum of understanding. I think it's important to note that immediately around transitioning to. Remote learning and while the district was responding to the very real consequences of COVID-19. The district was also pushing very important work that I think has created a stronger foundation. For BPS than where we were two years ago. Specifically, the superintendent has made a very clear part of her strategy for improving BPS and improving our schools. To focus on the quality guarantee. This is a social contract between the school district and our families. About what ought to be true in every BPS school. This focuses on the areas of academics, enrichment, facilities and student family supports. In addition, under the superintendent's leadership. The Boston School Committee has taken a number of very bold and courageous actions. To build a, a set of policies that, that protect and support the district to pursue an equity agenda. By removing unfair barriers and shifting the approach to attendance and grade level retention. By passing the mass core graduation requirements and significantly increasing. The expectations that all of our secondary school students are held across BPS. Tackling a new equity-based exam school policy. Continuing to invest and support and increase the number of BPS graduates. Who finish BPS with a seal of my literacy. And investing in new dual-language and native language programs across BPS. Updating the student privacy and data sharing policy. Updating a new code of conduct with the school board, the school committee has taken action on. And made significant progress toward new, new grading practices. Which are near-ready for a presentation to the Boston School Committee. And significant work to hire a diverse workforce all during a global pandemic. We think that this is important context because we want the public and our community to understand. That there are really foundational, conditional things that the district was putting in place. While also responding to the work of the MOU and responding in real time to the impact of COVID. We think that there is some evidence of, of improvement academically across the city. One, we think it's important to note that BPS, the Boston Public Schools is outperforming most other urban school districts across the Commonwealth. And certainly far outpacing and outperforming the three school districts in receivership. We also note that the Boston Public Schools is far outperforming its urban peers on the National Assessment of Education Progress. Many times considered to be the gold standard in assessments across the country. And BPS is a leader nationally of the urban, of the urban network. We also think it's important to note that during a global pandemic and I think the report makes this, the DSE 2020 report makes this very clear. That we're very proud of, of making significant progress toward codifying and implementing. A strong evidence-based literacy program across the pre-K to 12. DSE has acknowledged that in many ways have, have found it to be a strength that they highlight well in the report. And for context, anything they identify as a strength is something that they see as something that could be a national model or a model across the Commonwealth. And so that was about investing in high-quality, standard-aligned and culturally sustaining curricular materials. Strong Tier 1 phonics at the K-2 level. And providing opportunities for strong phonics instruction as Tier 2 and Tier 3 across the pre-K and 12. We've made a significant number of investments in things like reading specialists and opportunities such as Orton, Gillingham and Wilson to continue to build capacity. For that work. We've expected and outlined in very clear terms that to every principal and to most educators around the system, they know. That it is important that every day our students have access to complex culturally-affirming texts. And that our students are expected to read, write and speak from grade-level materials across every class. Every content, every school in BPS. That our students should have opportunities to intentionally build knowledge and language across all academic disciplines. And we've increased in DSE sites, this is a real strength in, in our current work. The job embedded professional development and coaching that is provided at the school level and will be continued into next year. To support the implementation of our equitable literacy initiative. The 2020 review was commissioned by the commissioner for two reasons. As he communicated to us in writing. One, that the BSE, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to whom the commissioner reports. Requested an update from the commissioner about the status of the Boston Public Schools. And the progress that the district had made under the original, the current and original MOU. The commissioner felt he needed a review to support his team's preparation and analysis for that update. Two, the commissioner believed that in conducting a, a review two years later. That this would provide an instructive roadmap for an incoming superintendent. And provide an analysis of where areas have improved. Where work has either stalled or not moved forward in the way that both the district and DSE had believed. And their review, as I sort of mentioned in the past, focused on six key areas. One, leadership and governance. Two, curriculum instruction. Three, student support. Four, data and assessment. Five, human resources and professional development. And then six, finance and asset management. I should note here that DSE, under each one of these categories, there are many, many indicators. DSE wanted to conduct for multiple reasons, probably a deeply focused review. And so they submitted a set of targeted questions by standard. To help focus the review, which I've linked in this document and we will gladly make public. The idea here was to focus on areas where the district had showed relative weakness in the 2019 review. And then the 2020 report. And to hone in on whether or not progress had made on those specific indicators under these six standards. So let me just share quickly, I'm not going to go through each one of these. Obviously, the report will, is made public and will continue to make it public and, and share it with folks who are interested in reading the entire document. But they do share a number of very positive findings in the report and we think it's really important that we obviously highlight some of these. To, to be transparent and clear in their report, they identify anything as, anything that's identified as a strength. Is something that could be considered a model. Either for the nation sort of K-12 educational system or for the Commonwealth. In leadership and governance. They identify two specific, three specific strengths. One, that the district had committed to and worked through a very aggressive and ambitious strategic plan. And had gone through many months of community engagement to get agreement. On the priorities identified in that plan as well as the sort of key priorities under each one of those. Each, each one of those, sorry, a number of initiatives under each one of those priorities. That the, the district's use. Of the equitable racial equity planning tool has been used. In very strong ways to leverage decisions at the school level, at the system level, around things such as curriculum. That the, the system has articulated clear instructional priorities which are understood by the vast majority of educators throughout the system. And that the system has done incredible work to increase accessibility for families and community members. Particularly to things like meetings such as the Community Equity Roundtable. School-based equity roundtables, school committee meetings and other forums that the BPS hosts. In the area of curriculum instruction, they make a number of really important findings. Two significant areas of strength. Include the, the investments the city has made and the school department has made to strengthen core instruction. They go on for a number of pages in pretty detailed and glowing language around the work that the system has done. To implement and get equitable literacy, both seated in transformation schools several years ago. And up off the ground across the system in a really coherent way. They applaud the school committee for their work around the adoption of mass core graduation requirements. And continue to be eager to see that work implemented and school-supported. They call out the work that the system has done. To ensure that schools are ready to implement that policy next year through things like the academic. Collaborative meetings between each school, members of the academics and finance team. Under student support, they identify work that the system has done to invest in an infrastructure to support a shift. Toward the Look Act, which ensures more access, increased access to native language instruction and dual-language opportunities across BPS. In human resources and professional development, that there is a strong pipeline in recruitment and retention program to increase the diversity of educators. And school leader workforce, they go on in very glowing and, and a number of pages to describe that work in detail. And to talk about how the evidence and data is really supporting that the district's initiative is moving in the right direction in a way that really truly is a model for the Commonwealth. And that there's just a really high-quality set of professional development offerings aligned to the district's equitable literacy focus. I will also just note, which is not in the report, but it does feel pretty clear to me that DSE has used a lot of these materials. In their own professional learning that they have borrowed from BPS. In the assessment section, that we have a very clear set of expectations around a balanced assessment system. That that system was designed with significant teacher voice and educator voice. And that schools are following through, irrespective of autonomy. And implementing administering the required assessment so that we have good data systems and inquiry supports. At schools, which they highlight as a real area of strength. And they call out in, under financial and asset management. The ways that we have leveraged city capital funds to get projects moving, the, the system has moved. A greater number of facility projects probably in the last year or two than has been seen over decades. The quality guarantee framework is something that they call out as a real area of success and clear for families. That these are the types of things that families want to see in schools. The system went through a very thoughtful and strategic process to engage community members around how best. To leverage and to make smart use of SIR funds particularly focused on things that are one-time costs. So that we do not have a funding cliff at the end of SIR. So those are some of the areas of strength. I'll share some significant areas of growth that I think we all agree need urgent attention. I will also say that there isn't a really far gap, I think, in the way that. Certainly, we would probably talk about this work in different ways. But I do think that the key areas that need dramatic and swift improvement. I think are really consistent from BPS's own analysis of, of our work as well as DSE's analysis of where we stand. In leadership and governance, they want to see more targeted focus on two critical areas. Special education and transportation, they want to see them as regular agenda items. In our conversations with principals and school leaders, they want to see them as regular agenda items on school committee agendas. They want to see a continued commitment in clear, detailed strategy. Around how the district will transform schools that are in the lowest 20%. They want us to address the leadership instability and the turnover that's happened. At the school committee, at the superintendent level and at key departmental levels, including. You know, obviously sort of leaders of specific divisions and departments. And that the system needs a very clear and more detailed way of tracking strategic plans. We would certainly suggest that we have that and would be happy to share some of those details publicly. But these are areas in which DSE would like to see growth and dramatic and urgent improvement. In the curriculum instruction section. These are all things that I would, that I would agree with as leader of the academics team. Is that we have to address where we have significant variation in implementation. We have practices across the system that are, that are literally leading the Commonwealth and there are areas in some pockets where. The practice is not at all where it needs to be and we have to ensure that our central office has the knowledge and skills to support principals. Who have the knowledge and skills to support educators to ensure that practice is improving across classrooms. I will say, if you want to dork out and read the appendix of the 2022 report. You can take a look at the observations that were conducted at 42 schools across BPS by the AIR team. The observations are pretty good. They're certainly, they're, they're good in the leading indicators where DSE has suggested. That it's these types of indicators that lead toward a transformation, positive transformation of a system. that it's these types of indicators that lead toward a transformation, positive transformation of a system. Those indicators are all consistent with what Desi says, move systems and move schools, which is really good news for us. And even in the areas which were relatively, relative weaknesses compared to our strengths. On average, the observation suggested that there was good, solid practice happening across classrooms in BPS, which is something I think did not come through necessarily in the report or in the presentation yesterday. But if you dig into the appendix, I think it makes that point very clear. And then it, then it outlines in a section that's really difficult to read, that the system has far more work to do around issues in special education. That, that there's a lacking of consistent policies and implementation of procedures. And inconsistent learning opportunities in the least restrictive environment for all students with disabilities. But not all England, while the district has made significant progress in this area over a, a number of years, it's still true that not 100% of all multilingual learners are receiving the appropriate ESL instruction over time. And that is something that the district is continuing to monitor, share reports every quarter with the Department of Justice. And I'm, I'm satisfied that we're continuing to make progress and agree with Desi's sort of aggressiveness that we have to get to 100%. The school choice and assignment system does not provide equal access to high-quality schools for all students across the city. And there needs to be a stronger system for managing, responding to and resolving complaints. There has been a backlog of complaints, particularly during COVID, that is totally unacceptable across BPS, and that needs to be addressed by our team, and we're developing systems to do that. In the area of human resources and professional development, the use of the educator evaluation system does not accomplish its essential goals. They found that, that while evaluations were done, that the feedback typically was not robust enough and oftentimes lacked the type of evidence that they would like to see after a small sample of looking at about 40 evaluations across BPS. And there's a lack of mechanisms to ensure that all educators receive high-quality professional development, even though the district has offered high-quality professional development, that there needs to be more improved systems and structures to track that all educators are taking advantage of that professional development. And in terms of assessment, they identify that the system, from their perspective, lacks the current necessary systems and internal controls at the central office in school level to ensure that the data is accurate as possible, particularly relative to BPS graduation and dropout rates. So for example, what this means is if a student withdraws from Boston Public Schools and identifies, I've moved back to my home country, I'm no longer a student in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that the schools and BPS needs to ensure that schools are collecting the right type of information to verify that the student has actually moved to their home country and is continuing in education there. And so that's work that we'll, we'll need to continue to do. We have settled into a contract with Ernst &amp; Young to help us the auditing process so that we're collecting good information on a regular basis and can, can, can improve our internal controls on this specific matter. And then under financial and asset management, the department identifies that the BPS needs to improve on-time arrival rates in uncovered buses that remain unacceptable and that this has a disproportionate impact on students with disability. And, and another finding, which I personally would, would, would disagree with, but Desi is reporting and communicating that they, they believe that the system does not have a comprehensive, long-term facilities plan. And needs to focus not only on preventive deferred maintenance across the BPS, but also about sort of improved and new facilities plan across, across the city of Boston. And we certainly pointed to the announcement of the Green New Deal as our really sort of clear lever of addressing that concern. We share in the interest of transparency, I won't go over this tonight. But we will share these on the website and also will work to get them translated. Some key documents that we think are important, I'm not going to quibble over a few things here and there where we see the report differently. But if you're interested in sort of getting into the details, BPS wrote a very robust opening reflection in a, in a cross-functional way that included the voices of educators and principals in our central office to assess where we thought we were relative to the six standards and the indicators that were being assessed. After we had an opportunity to host Desi onsite, we, we published and shared with them a post-review reflection that we think is instructive to the way that we were thinking about where we were relative to these key, key areas. We share with you the draft report that we shared, that we were provided about a week ago from Desi. And a cover letter outlining our areas where we just saw the, the draft report slightly differently. And you can juxtapose that with the final report that Desi published this Friday. I want to acknowledge that while we understand that BPS has significant work to do, I own that as a leader of the academics team. And we know that we have to act more urgently and focus on some key areas. I think the good news here is that we do agree where the most, we do agree with Desi and where the most dramatic improvement is necessary. In areas of special education, multilingual learners, transportation and facilities. And we stand ready to roll up our sleeves and to significantly make progress in these areas. I will also acknowledge that in some points, the report, I think, articulates that somehow BPS has not made progress in these areas. I will say that I fundamentally disagree with that assessment and can point to really specific ways where while that progress may not be accelerated enough, I think it's disingenuous and not accurate to say that progress has not been made. We're certainly proud of that progress and we acknowledge that it is not nearly swift enough to meet the needs of our students and our community. In terms of next steps, the city of Boston and the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education are in serious discussions about next steps. I certainly won't share those details, the superintendent can comment on anything that she feels is appropriate. And the commissioner at the Bessie Board meeting, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, so that he expected to have some sort of update in about one week. And so we'll certainly notify the committee and the public as soon as there is something to announce relative to those discussions. And I will, just in the interest of transparency, I've recreated with my colleagues, a special thank you to Monica Hogan, who helped with this. I just sort of captured a slide that Commissioner Riley had showed. So this is, does not intend to communicate anything other than these are the specific areas that the commissioner is most concerned about and would like to see us to, to make swift and urgent progress on. And believes that as any part of settlement agreement or agreement between the district, that some or more or all of these areas need to be included in that work. So I'll turn this back over to the superintendent, who will share any last reflections and thoughts that she might have.
Thank you, Dr. Eccleston, for that incredibly thorough presentation. And it will be up for others to see on our website. And thank you for attaching the documents as well, so that in full set transparency, the public will have those documents. I do want to let you all know as a school committee that we have been working with the mayor and the mayor's office, my team and myself, to review the Friday proposal that the commissioner had proposed to the mayor. We have been in discussions since then and also today. And we have a draft response to provide to the commissioner this evening. So we are acting swiftly. We want to resolve this matter, get agreement with the, with the commissioner on the items that he has identified as areas of growth and areas in which we can make progress on. As I said, when I gave Mayor Wu my promise, one of the things we wanted to deliver on was getting a driver's contract done, getting this Desi piece finished and in place. I'm working on the BTU contract as we speak. And a few other things so that we can ensure there's a strong foundation and a strong transition for the next superintendent coming on board. And we can just hand it over and he or she can get started on the work right away. And so again, thank you, Dr. Eccleston, thank you to your entire team. And I'd be glad to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Dr. Eccleston, for the report. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. You know the drill, not going to remind you, five minutes each, all right? We'll start with Dr. Alkins.
I think Brandon had his hand up first, that's why.
I'm sorry, you showed up first in my screen. Mr. Carded Hernandez.
Such a gentleman, Dr. Alkins. You could have gone first, I wouldn't have minded. One, thanks for the presentation. Two, I think I speak for everyone who's following this. This is like awful, you know, like the headline for me continues to read from the state saying that BPS, and I don't totally remember the language, but is entrenched with dysfunction. And we spent, and I want to honor that, like, in all of that, there are, there are folks bottom to the top who are working really hard every single day in service of kids. And then at the same time, there's some like real questions we have to ask. Like, how are we here and how are we still here? There's one that sort of feels like the biggest one for me upfront, and then I have a series of other questions. I'll respect the five-minute clock and can get back to it. But what is our role here? Like, we are the governing body and I feel like we are in FYI. Like, there is a back and forth happening with the state and we're being told eh, sort of after it happens. And I'm saying that on a level of self-preservation, like, I, I'm here, my kid is running in and out of the room, I'm not seeing him tonight. I have made a decision to be part of this body. We are having conversations about an elected school board and an elected school committee. But to be in a situation when we're, where we're being told, we'll let you know what we're responding after we respond. It just makes, I like, how, then how does governance work? And that is, I mean, that is like the sort of basic question I have and I'm, you know, we all work too hard to just be here as rubber stamps. And I'm, I'm frustrated and a little bit confused.
Madam Chair, I don't know if you want to take that one as the chair and I do know that operational matters are of the purview of the superintendent. This is a Desi agreement that they are entering into with the city and BPS. I am the representative of the body, the school committee body. I am in constant contact with the chair around these matters and certainly part of the discussion, once we do have some draft agreement, will be brought forward to the school committee for discussion and full ratification.
Thank you. That's good for us to know. I think it's also good for the public. I think I'm like everyone else, I had heard rumor that the, this review was in before it was in. And I saw it, as you guys know, like in real time with everybody else. I think it matters for us as folks who move through our day-to-day lives in Boston, so that folks don't think we have information that we don't have and we're governing when we're not governing. And so I just, I, I like needed to say that because this, this part of the process, it, it just surprises me. And I'm going to ask some other questions, I'm, I want to be respectful of time. And I jotted some down. I guess the, the sort of first question is, you know, I was looking at slide three, this is the first time I've seen this presentation, I'm looking at slide three. And I'm curious how we landed in a place at the, after the original review, where our priorities, that we were able to have a chart where our priorities were different than the one that the state offered us in relationship to the possibility of receivership. And so, like, I'm seeing, and maybe I'm just confused on sort of like this, the state of play here, but like, how, where is the misalignment and how did that happen? And then I, I think the, the second question, it's a piggyback on this one, which is like, where does transformation schools fit into all of this? My understanding when reading the report is a, a sort of key piece of the, the persistent struggle was our, our, our lack or inability to, to implement progress in those schools. And it didn't make its way into the final slide of priorities, though I felt like that was sort of a highlight in their own review.
Yeah, so transformation schools will be part of the agreement. It was part of the original agreement, it's been very important to BPS and to our community to do investments with transformation schools. We have made significant investments in transformation schools, as you know. We signed this 2020 MOU like the same day that we shut down schools. And, and so that meant that our tension was split with first trying to manage the day-to-day health and safety of our community and then also shifting to remote learning. And still, we were able to secure $100 million investment from Mayor Walsh and put in place significant investments to, to the next school budget for our transformation schools to begin the process of supporting them with instructional facilitators, transformation coaches. We piloted our equitable literacy with our transformation schools. We started with an adoption for new literacy materials for our transformation schools and started on working with our principals and their development in transformation schools. And so there was significant support provided to our transformation schools. It wasn't clearly discussed in the public. You know, but it, there was work done on the transformation schools. As for the difference in key priorities, you know, the commissioner had his priorities for the 2020 MOU. And he was, you know, firm on his priorities. And so these, the priorities for BPS, obviously, were special ed and transportation and our 31 transformation schools. We have also spent considerable time around access and our strategic plan, which we had adopted shortly after the MOU, but it was pretty much solidified. It just hadn't gone to the full committee for approval, which it was approved in May. You know, around our six priorities within, within that strategic plan.
Unmuting myself and I'm looking if there is additional time for me, I'm sorry. Can't see the timer. Oh, I'm out of time. All right, I will raise my hand later. Thank you so much. Thank you. And the only thing I'll end with is, I'm also naming so many of the areas of strength, while there is a lot of spaces for growth and I, I'm just like honoring that. Were, were initiatives that you brought to the table. So thank you for that leadership. It's hard to imagine another, I think, like so many folks have said already, like, it's hard to imagine another leadership transition at a time like this. And I'll ask some more questions later, thanks.
Dr. Alkins?
I echo the sentiments of Mr. Carded Hernandez and thanking everybody just for the, the immense amount of work that's transpired over the past few years in particular. And the, the, the tough amount of time, and I appreciate the report and the provision of context. My questions are, sort of now that we have this report, I'd be interested to sort of hear from some of our, our individual departments about sort of what is the state in, in the development of strategic plans. So I think of, for example, maybe an Ekstrom, right, who's, who's new into the role for our Department of Special Education. And just thinking about what has been the process for developing a strategic plan. And then on the backend, one of the other priorities that we, it wasn't said in the last slide, but I'm pretty sure it's implied is, is the effective communication and inclusion of a community voice in all of these processes and how we're going to make sure that that is also a forefront, at the forefront and a priority. So I, I, I would just like to hear about sort of the development of strategic plans moving forward.
Yeah, really, on, in my tenure, I brought forward several external experts who could come and look at different priorities that I heard from the community. One was around transportation, and we brought in an expert from outside, gave us immediate and good feedback on our transportation services and accountability and performance. That was given to Delavern Stanislaw. She used that information to make operational improvements. Now we have the contract, which will take care of some of the more entrenched improvements that we needed to make. Second, I brought in Bertrand Weber to do expert analysis of our food nutrition services, which needed significant intervention and operational improvement. And we made several of those. And then, third, I brought in Patty Tormina. Some of you who have been on the committee, like Mr. O'Neal, Ms. Robinson, may remember that she was the special ed executive director in Memphis City Schools with Dr. Carol Johnson, and then came to Boston Public Schools when Dr. Johnson came and did a full top-down review with the Council of Great City Schools on special education. She had been working early in 2020 with Ethan Dablemont Burns on a strategic plan and doing a deep dive into the special education areas in which we needed significant improvement. And then, of course, the pandemic hit, and we were quickly turning to how do we do remote learning for students with disabilities and get them back into school, our high in-person priority students, and provide compensatory education and summer school to our students. And so that put some of that work on the back burner. We have recently hired Nadine, Dr. Nadine Ekstrom, who has significant background in systems-level work. She went and reviewed those early documents that Ms., Dr. Tormina had done with Mr. Dablemont Burns, has been working to understand the system, had done many interviews to find out the current status, and has drafted a strategic plan for the district that's very thorough. And looking forward to vetting that with our SPED PAC and our key stakeholders, our educators, the BTU, et cetera, the school leaders, as we move forward with, with trying to develop that. Also want to note that with our OEL office, we also, as you know, the state of Massachusetts had English only for many, many years. But then, I think it was in 2016, passed the Look Act. And so, when I stepped into this role, they had not, Boston Public Schools had not provided an application to the State Department around that. We secured additional leadership into the office. Dr. Romero Johnson began work with the ELL Task Force on that document. There was some disagreement on the document and going back and forth. And Farah Osiraj now is working to finalize our, our draft strategic planning documents, which focus on native language literacy and the seal of bilingual literacy and dual language and ethnic studies coursework, which were priorities of the ELL Task Force. So that's kind of where we're at with the strategic planning documents and the supports that we had brought in place.
Others, Mr. Tron?
Your questions, Dr. Alkins?
Yes, I was just looking at the time. Yes, thank you.
All righty. Mr. Tron?
Yes. Well, this is the first time I, I, I see the document, and if I'm not mistaken, in the area that, that needs growth, I remember, you know, there's some mentioning about the role of the the school committee and, and the lack of the school committees in discussing or exploring areas of student with disability and other areas that need growth, but somehow the school committee was mentioned, was mentioned in, in, in some of that, those areas. Would you, could you, or the Deputy Superintendent elaborate on that again? I'm somehow at a loss why we were mentioning that regarding, you know, the, the fact is that this is within your domain, the operational side of the, the, you know, the, the total operation. And we are mentioned as part of growth assessment, so please elaborate on that a little bit.
Think that the commissioner had written in his report some of the leadership changes in the school committee and the instability in terms of governance and leadership. And I think that was his concern, was that there had been turnover in the membership and in the, in the, the chair position. There'd been turnovers in mayors, multiple years of turnovers in superintendents, and that the leadership instability was contributing to the lack of accelerated growth in, in the areas in which they identified. I think that was the intent. They did commend the school committee for taking a focus on the student outcomes and this, and the work that they had been doing with, you know, external support.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neal?
Thank you for, for noting that, Superintendent. Yes, they did call out in the report, which was a sobering report to read, and I appreciate, I read every word of it, and I do, and I've been reflecting on it a lot, and I do appreciate Mr. Eccleston, your, your work this evening to lay out. I thought you, you know, you were, you were fair in your assessment. The district has done a lot of good things. Superintendent, I commend you for a lot of the work that you led, and yes, we were handed a pandemic literally the next working day, I think, after, after the MOU was agreed to, the previous MOU was agreed to. But we do have a lot of challenges, right? We are, we are not serving our students with special needs appropriately. We have work to do on ELL. We have work to do on transportation. We have work to do on accountability, on systems. And, you know, the, the commissioner did call out, and, and it was noted, the work we did on goals and values and focusing more on student outcomes. You know, I cringe a little bit when they say, "Well, we only had special ed on the agenda once in several years." In fact, special ed is talked about in a number of reports, but that doesn't take away from the key issues here, of what this district needs to focus on, and, and I think as, as school committee members, excuse me, and I do appreciate Mr. Cardet Hernandez, the first question you led off on, because we have a system, we have a, a time of transition coming up, right? We will be having a new superintendent. We are actively in a search right now. And it's going to be incumbent upon us to follow through on the commitments that this superintendent is negotiating on our behalf, and I thank you, Superintendent Pecicelli, as for the approach that you were taking in this. And you and your team are being very thoughtful on what are the main areas, what can we commit to. I'm deeply appreciative that the mayor is involved in this as well, because it's going to require a lot of city support to make a lot of these things happen, particularly as we talk about facilities and transportation issues, et cetera. So it's going to have to be an all-hands-on-deck approach on this. And we, as the school committee, even as the superintendent is negotiating this, and does, you know, we have designated operational responsibility, we do have oversight, and we need to understand this potential agreement and think about how we are going to provide oversight to make sure, in fact, that we are meeting commitments made under it, and that we're improving the educational opportunities for the youth that we're trying to serve. And so, we do need to understand it and, and reflect on does our strategic plan that we have approved, does our goals and values that we have approved, that we're working on, and the student outcomes we're focused on, does it align with what, what the state is asking us to improve on, so that we're all rowing in the same direction, so to speak? And we're not at cross purposes, Mr. Cardet Hernandez. I had the same reaction that you did, like, wow, how come there were two different things here? How come we want a little bit aligned better? And there were always good answers for it, but it's incumbent we ask these questions, and that we recognize what the challenges are, and this sobering report is interesting to read and learn from and reflect on, and that we all commit to follow it, to implement it, and, and to improve for the youth. And, and I do just have to say it in the last moment that I speak, because, Chair, you started off by talking, you know, a moment of silence about what happened yesterday in Texas, and the superintendent, you did as well. And it is obviously a, a deeply emotional moment for anyone thinking about it, and those of us who are committed to the youth that are in our classrooms every day, were just horrified by what we saw, and this morning, I could not stop thinking about all of our teachers going into classrooms, waking up and going into classrooms, and thinking about how they were going to have conversations with their students today. And all of our BPS teachers across the district, and our paraprofessionals and others that support our students, how they were thinking about how hard it would be to have those conversations today about what happened. And I appreciate, Superintendent, you immediately focusing your report this morning, this evening, on school safety and the work that you have been doing, because I know it is incredibly important to you, and much of that work has to happen behind the scenes. But I just, I'd wanted to particularly call out to our teachers who I know had a very, very difficult morning, to the conversations they had to have. As for our parents, who, you know, I, I talked to one parent who said, you know, "How am I going to put my child on a bus this morning?" And, and so, I know how hard a day it has been for everyone involved in education, and, and our hearts go out to our, our friends in Texas for what they're facing now as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Before we go back around, I just want to make one comment to one of your questions, your first questions, Mr. Cardet Hernandez. I think one of the things that's been most difficult with the receiving of this report, et cetera, has been the timing. Remember that we only can meet in this forum. And so, unfortunately, once the report goes live, it goes public. And so, it wasn't that information was being withheld. It could not be shared until the moments in which it has been shared. So therefore, you received the report yesterday when it went public. Unfortunately, we had a meeting scheduled today. This is the first time that we've, as a body, been had, has, have been able to have a beginning conversation around this. So there's been no intent in withholding information. Believe me, I have been emailing and talking with both the superintendent and the mayor's office as I have begun to understand this process as well. This is not something that we have gone through before, and I need to understand both the role of the district, the role of the mayor's office, and our role, all at the same time. And so, I want to assure you that we are in there and will be reviewing and, and, and doing what we need to do as that time comes. And I know that we will be hearing within the next day, or, you know, about the report that will be going back to DESI, and will be another moment for our conversation. But it is difficult when we are subject to open meeting, particularly when we've got things of this nature that we do not have the luxury of being able to sit around a table and have a, you know, strategic session, a conversation around it. So we will continue to be learning as this process goes on, but I appreciate the question, because I can assure you, I have that same urgency, myself, of wanting to know and understand more as we move forward. So just thank you. So I want to turn it back to you, Mr. Cardet Hernandez, for your next question.
First, thank you, and I, I'm speaking for myself. I have a feeling I'm speaking for everyone, and I thank you for your leadership. I don't envy you as the chair right now. And at the same time, I'm very thankful that you're there. And this is really complicated, and I, I just, I'm naming this, this is a, it is a hard time to be a, a BPS parent as you're watching these headlines. It's a hard time to be a BPS educator as you're watching these headlines, and and while there were areas of real success that were named, the review overwhelmingly was negative. And I think that's like an intellectually honest take here. It was a review that highlighted incredible dysfunction. And as we are preparing to respond or come to an agreement, you know, and this governing body continues to be named as part of that review, we have to ask ourselves questions, even if it is in slowing down. Where do we fit in, and how are we part of that final? That, those final conversations. And, and I'm, I am, I'm incredibly thankful that you are there, because your commitment to kids, it's, it's clear, it's evident. So thank you, and I, and I hope you know that even in that, even in my first question, it was, it was not directed for you. It's a bigger question about governance right now. And as the state is in discussion with the mayor's office and with the superintendent's office, where do we fit in, particularly if we are governing in a time of, of crisis? And these are bigger questions that I just want to make sure are named and are on public record, so that we can do right by addressing it. I want to ask two questions just around sort of next steps, as well as unpacking some things, and I'm sorry, I'm looking down at my notes really fast. There was a, I think on Slide three, there was a, we alluded to addressing chronic absenteeism as a priority. Among other data points, I've asked about this particular point of data. So I am curious, like, how have we addressed chronic absenteeism, and where are we seeing a reduction in the students who are chronically absent? And I'll, I'll start with that question.
Brian Marks heads up our supervisors of attendance. We have reviewed and rewritten our attendance policy. We have taken a sharp focus on chronic attendance, particularly during the pandemic, with a number of initiatives to support our families. I don't have him here today to answer that question, but he has done a presentation to the school committee on attendance, I think it was this past fall. You know, we've done door-knocking campaigns, letters home to families. We've taken a gentler approach to families around you know, compliance with attendance, obviously because of the pandemic and the significant mental health crisis on our hands. And, you know, so he has really been working with his team around these new strategies to support students in this really challenging time, and families as well.
Have we seen a reduction year over year, even typical school year, thinking this as sort of our most typical in a while, to 2019 levels? Are we seeing a reduction in the number of students who are chronically absent, or an increase?
So, chronically absent, I, you know, I don't know, Mark, Mark Racine might be on the, the call here and have some data. I don't know if he has that data right at hand, but we would be glad to bring that back to you at the next meeting, to make sure that you can, that you can see the exact data. So I don't want to speak. Obviously, we have seen challenges with certain populations and certain grade levels during the pandemic with attendance. We've also seen challenges with daily attendance because of COVID. So remember, students who got COVID were out for 10 days. It's 15 days, and you're considered chronically absent. So it's hard to interpret these numbers as real numbers for students because of COVID and also because of the instability and disruption to families and students either caring for a family member, or having to work during this time, or housing instability, or other matters that have been exacerbated because of the pandemic. So certainly, I, I will get you those most up-to-date numbers for you. So certainly I, I will get you those most up to date numbers for you and by the next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. And I, yeah, I can imagine that challenge and this is one facing most urban school systems right now. And and then, of course, you know better than anyone, chronic absenteeism as one of the leading indicators of of dropping out. And so it's, it's such an important data point that that I, you know, I saw from the presentation, it seems like it's one that we're focused on and I just want to hear more. I have one more question about special education that I will ask in the next round.
Dr. Alkins?
Thank you. So I'm, I'm, I'm concerned, I guess a follow up question is, is then what does become the next steps in terms of involving us more in the process? Does that mean that our chair becomes more regularly involved with the superintendent? Like in these meetings moving forward? Or in regular meetings moving forward? How do we become more involved in that sense?
So I meet with Jerry officially twice a week on school committee weeks and and Michael as the vice chair. And then I also meet with her once a week in person. These are this formal official meetings. You know, so each week meet on Mondays and then on school committee meetings, we meet on Mondays and then before on Wednesdays. We also talk twice a day, Jerry? So maybe more typically during the day. And also typically in evening, you know, anytime there's anything that is important. And you know, I always call the chair and seek her advice. I want to make sure that she is fully aware and understands. There are times when I also call members and give you updates on the week if it has been a particularly challenging week. Or if there's a specific big piece of policy in front of us, I typically will call and make sure that you don't have any questions on the policy, that you're understanding it whenever that's coming forward. As this particular issue on the MOU, it is really critical. I mean, literally, we knew about this review just a couple of months ago. And then they just did the review just a couple of weeks ago. And we got their feedback and then we were able to have one week to turn it around at a very limited, you know, there was just a handful of us to be able to turn it around with factual corrections. And it was important for us to provide for them the factual corrections, many of which they didn't take. And, you know, be able to then now negotiate a new agreement and stave off receivership. And this has been all consuming. And so I think it's just really, really important that we look at the the steps that we need to take moving forward here with this agreement. Now that the commissioner has laid that out to his board yesterday, we've already turned around our response and have been working diligently around the clock to do that swiftly. And then if he is thinking that this is somewhere near what he can accept and it is near what the mayor will accept and and the chair, we will then bring it forward as a final draft to this body to discuss and to react to. And then, of course, we never take a vote in the first meeting. You take it after two weeks. And so certainly that's what we will do.
And you should know also yesterday, I both Rafaela and I both attended and and Mr. O'Neil as well, attended the DSE BESI meeting. That body had
And and Ms. Mercer as well.
That's right. Ms. Mercer was there as well. Yes, thank you. That board had received the report the night before. And then they were having a presentation. So they were basically in the same position that we have been in in terms of hearing and trying to comprehend and understand what's being said and also what's being proposed. So it's, you know, I said, this has been, you know, quite a week in which all of this has happened, you know, and, you know, this, this is not a great way of dealing with some of the most significant information that we will ever deal with. You know, sitting there, I'll be, I will share with you that sitting there, I, I went through periods of feeling angry, embarrassed, frustrated and sad at both understanding what was being said about us, understanding some of the things that were not being said completely correctly, but just being saddened that a district of our size and stature, so many everyday details and processes that are not being handled in a professional way. You know, some of the examples they gave of not being, not being given the correct number of bathrooms that we had, you know, said that had been updated. And when they went out to look, they found out that they weren't. I mean, these are small details, but they're critical, not giving adequate data about what we've, what we're doing and how that can throw off not just only our our graduation rates, but the graduation rates that the state is reporting to the federal government. So it's bigger than just a mistake. And, you know, number one, we must do better than this. These are not, you know, these are not pandemic related. Some of these things have been going on for decades and decades and decades. And they've got to stop. Period. They just have to stop. It's not fair to our students. It's not fair to our teachers. It's not fair to our families. It's not fair to anyone. Yes, I mean, I know that there are other things that will take much more time, but just some of the basic things, there's just no excuse. And so we, we have got to figure out how quickly to get those things resolved and moving on the right path. And then there are those issues that, you know, we have been fretting with for decades around special education around, you know, ELLs, et cetera. We have a large district. The number of students that are that we have in these special categories are more than what some districts have in students. So we know we've got a big issue. So we're going to need to look at how we manage those things differently. Moving forward, you know, maybe we need much bigger departments. We're breaking it down into smaller groups that we can really move forward. But we owe it to our city, we owe it to our families that we, we take this more than seriously. We have an opportunity to stave off receivership by humbling ourselves and, you know, taking it on the chin that, yeah, there are things that we need to do, but we say we're committed and we actually have to be that committed. So that, that's what I'm looking for as we move to the next steps. And as we sit and have these conversations together with the mayor's office and with the district, that it's not who's right or who's wrong and in interpretation, but what must we do so that our families feel that we, we've got their backs and we are really going to take this seriously and move forward? I want to give Ms. Palanco Garcia an opportunity to speak and and say a bit about yesterday and the work, the group that she came with and the thoughts of parents because parents were well represented yesterday and they're a key factor in this as we move forward.
Yes. Gracias a todos los que me han precedido en la palabra.
Thank you to all of the people who have preceded me with their words.
Yo quiero decir que esto es un momento que estamos viviendo con una amenaza de intervención estatal donde todos debemos unirnos.
I want to say that this is a moment where the receivership threat, where we all have to be united.
El poder ver, los padres ver ayer a la presidenta del comité, ver al señor O'Neil en, eh, con ellos, con los maestros y con la comunidad fue bien significativo.
For the parents yesterday, the fact to see the chair of the, the school committee and Mr. O'Neil along with a lot of teachers was very significant.
Esto es un momento, el distrito educativo de Boston tiene muchas cosas buenas que están pasando a través de la, de liderazgo de Brenda Casellios. Hemos visto grandes significativos avances.
The educational districts have a lot of things going on with the great leadership of Dr. Brenda Casellios.
Pero también sabemos que por años, por años hemos estado pidiendo muchas mejoras, sobre todo a los aprendices del idioma inglés.
But we also know that for years and years, we have been asking for a lot of resources, especially for our English learners.
Transportación, ven, eh, facilidades. Hay muchas situaciones que mucha de nuestra comunidad y nuestros padres han estado pidiendo por años.
Transportation installations. There are a lot of things that our parents and communities have been asking for in a long time.
Sin embargo, todos los que estamos aquí sabemos que la intervención no es la respuesta adecuada a las peticiones que todos y todas hemos estado haciendo por años.
Nevertheless, we all here know that the receivership is not the right answer to the petitions that we have been asking.
Entonces yo pienso que debemos ponerle atención. Esto debe servirnos de reflexión a nosotros. Debe servirnos de reflexión para que nosotros definitivamente demos el frente y podamos tener planes adecuados. Por planes adecuados y que sean consistentes en el tiempo y que, y que puedan ser medibles de soluciones.
So we have to pay attention and we have to reflect on what's happening and come up with a plan that reflects what is needed.
Por ejemplo, tenemos un grupo de trabajo que es el ILL Task Force que ha estado pidiendo desde mucho tiempo por la alfabetización en el idioma nativo.
For instance, there, that we have the ELL Task Force that has been asking for a long time for better levels of literacy for English learners.
Eh, han estado pidiendo por planes de mejora para los aprendices del idioma inglés con discapacidades.
They have been asking for improvement plans for English learners with these capacities.
Y me preocupa que estoy escuchando, que va a haber un memorando de entendimiento que se va a firmar. Y me pregunto en ese sentido la siguiente.
And I'm very concerned with the fact that there's going to be an understand, understanding memorandum?
Me pregunto quiénes vamos a tener acceso a ese memorando antes de que se firme. Vamos a participar las organizaciones comunitarias, las familias vamos a tener acceso antes de que se firme ese memorando porque creo que es necesario y es prudente que tengamos nosotros, que los, las organizaciones comunitarias y los, para que representan a las familias tengan acceso a este documento antes de la firma para que puedan aportar también.
Who's going to have access to this memorandum before it's signed? Because I think that the community, the stakeholders and the community members and families need, and and I also consider it appropriate that we look at it before this is signed.
Este memorando va a determinar qué va a pasar. Un acuerdo entre las partes. Entonces nosotros tenemos, los, las comunidades, las familias tienen derecho a saber qué va a decir ese memorando. Por eso mi, mi reflexión esta tarde es que las comunidades y las familias puedan tener acceso antes de la firma a ese memorando.
This memorandum is determining what's going to happen and I think the communities and families have the right to see what it says.
No sé si alguien, si la superintendente me puede contestar esa pregunta.
I don't know if the superintendent can answer to that question.
Well, thank you. It's really important that the community be able to see it and respond to it. You know, we have been watching it and it is definitely based in the things that I have heard as items and strategies that are needed to improve quickly on the areas that have been identified. I will get back to you on the engagement process. I will speak to the commissioner about that. I also will clarify whether a vote is actually needed or not. I'm not certain that there's a vote of the full school committee. I'm, I just want to make sure. I know we discussed it in the 2020 report. I thought we had done a vote on that one, but I don't think that maybe we did. So I just want to clarify that piece, Mr. Cardet Hernandez and Ms. Robinson and the full, the full body. So I will get clarity from the commissioner on his expectations around school committee involvement. I will get clarity and expectations around any kind of community opportunity to reflect on the report and provide input. And then I will get clarity and whether or not this body is expected to vote on it. Certainly, I will bring it forward for discussion. But if you all have to ratify it or vote on it, I just want to get clarity on that before I overcommit to one way or the other.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
I think this will be my last round too, but I think I'll just say this, whether we have to vote or not, I think for the public and for governance, like it really should come back here. This, just naming it. The question that I have is more focused on some of our most vulnerable populations, specifically kids with disabilities and and students who are not native English speakers. You know, the the issue isn't, for me, is not just about resources, like we are that can be part of the problem, but that's like not just what I'm seeing identified in, in in this report, but also what I know to sort of be true. It's about a, like a full assessment of what's broken and how it's broken and and it's about governance that's, that's driven by clear data and it's driven by goals. It's a comprehensive strategy to achieve it. And then obviously it's like continuous assessment of progress through a single academic year, right? Like formative and summative assessments, parallel process to what we ask schools to do that we do at a district level. And then we just like rinse and repeat. And I hear about more and more and more on top of broken systems and I worry that that's how we continue to stay in this space. It's additive and sometimes there are things we need to take away so we can start fresh. You know, I read in the report, special education continues to operate in systemic disarray as students with disabilities still aren't receiving the services they are legally owed. And the district lacks the necessary systems and internal controls of the central office and school levels to ensure accurate data reporting on key indicators. Like those things that we know are actual, actually the levers of system improvement are the two sort of biggest flags. Not just programmatic stuff and things, but like the system level controls to measure progress consistently. I'm, you know, how can improvement happen if, if we are not, we don't have that information? And I, I guess my question here is like I'm, I, I'm, it's less about stuff and things and like what is our special education strategy that is not just about, and this is very important for me, not just about saying we have over identified black and brown kids for special education services because I'm not in full belief that the tier one supports that those kids would receive in a general education classroom are appropriate. But like, how are we fixing instruction from the ground up and measuring progress throughout the way? And then how are we offering a diversified portfolio of special education services to families so that we are not operating in what is described through the DSE report to me as just a binary system? Like you are either in a sub separate classroom or you're not. And we know that kids are much more complex than that and they have much more complicated needs than just one or the other. And I haven't heard yet what that approaches. That may not be built yet. And so I guess I want to know, what is the strategy? And if we don't have it, how are we building it and what do we want it to look like? And if we don't have it, how are we building it and what do we want it to look like?
Well, you know, that you've already admitted, I don't know if Dr. Eccleston wants to chime in here, but you know, certainly we have a lot of work to be done in special education. From properly, you know, putting together a strategic plan that highlights those instructional goals that you say. You know, I know part of the equitable literacy is working with students and ensuring that teachers have the capacity around dyslexia supports and that is also important to have the the screeners for that. And so that's part of the work that we are funding and moving forward. But then there's also really significant work to be done with other disabilities. Students who have autism, for instance, we know that they present very uniquely in each and every incidence and what their needs are. And many of the IEPs for our students are written particularly for their specific learning needs and service needs. And so some of it is easier than others to put together the instructional programs for our students, as you well know. You know, around just kind of generalized support, whether it's pull out or push in type of model. Or if you're talking about more, you know, you know, individualized kind of supports for students on the spectrum, for instance. So I, it's just not as easy as, as putting in an equitable literacy program for everybody, which is also really hard to do, let me just say. But then differentiating it, making sure teachers have the proper training around the strategies. They understand the curriculum at the varied levels, they understand learner styles, et cetera, et cetera, that need to, need to occur. So it's a mixture of curriculum, instruction, professional development, scheduling, service delivery, all of that coming together around the individual and specific needs of each and every student. And so how you go about that needs to be clearly defined. And it's part of the IEP process, which also I believe needs significant review and professional development, particularly with our coordinators of special education, our area directors, and whether those positions are structured adequately to meet the demand and need of our student population, which is 22%, very much over the national average of students with disabilities. I don't know, Dr. Eccleston, if you want to add to that at all.
I'll just make a few comments, just to build off what you said, Superintendent. So the question around the overall strategy, point one here, right, is to ensure strong tier one instruction across all BPS schools. The BPS has not taken enough accountability in the past or put the stake in the ground around what good instruction ought to look like across every BPS school. That is critical. We have started to do that work and I think the work in literacy is some of the most impressive work happening across the Commonwealth. It's built around supporting the needs of dyslexic students first at its core. And I think that's really critical and some of the work we're doing to the superintendent's point. And I am really passionate about tier one instruction because I feel like that's in some ways the sort of most important part of this. But we can't forget about the needs for both tier two and tier three instruction. If you don't have that stuff tight, the rest of the game is over, right? So you've got to like focus there. On, on it, as it relates to sort of our supports for students with disabilities, I agree with you. And I think it's a really good point, the sort of idea of constantly layering on additional resources in terms of a broken system is not going to get us anywhere. And the system is broken in many ways. And I don't mean that in any disrespect to sort of adults and others who are leading that work. But this is a system that's been inherited over sort of decades that is very problematic. And when I say that, what I'm talking about is our entire system for students with disability is built around a system in which students are assigned a code and based on that code, they get X level of services. Because if every student who has that profile needs the same levels of services. And that's fundamentally wrong and typical to what the point of special education is, right? That it's supposed to customize and specialize. And so we have to, we have to root and branch, rip up that system and actually design it around the customized needs of students at the IEP table and ensure that our educators have the knowledge and skills and resources to both facilitate that discussion, but also listen to families and their advocates who are asking for specific things that we have to take into account in those conversations. And just because it doesn't fit the profile box of whatever the code is, doesn't mean that it's either a right or a wrong thing to include in terms of their services. That is the next layer of our work. As part of this, the, this is an issue across the Commonwealth, right? And obviously, sort of the complexities of Boston make it that much more difficult. But DESI has started a new pilot called the IEP Improvement Process that is exactly doing this issue around helping school districts around the Commonwealth design their IEPs around the customized needs of students. I think it would be a great idea as part of this agreement for the BPS to have a customized support from DESI relative to this specific issue of someone who can help work at it with us at a systems level to help sort of root and branch deal with those issues. Now, I'm not going to say that that's going to be part of the proposal, but I think that that is something that is going to be really critical as we, as we continue to tighten the tier one, two and three instruction across BPS.
And I will just, and I know I'm probably out of time and I, I really appreciate this conversation because it's not, it is like rooted in progress and not in the sort of, the sort of headlines of chaos. I also hope as part of that, and I think this is like really important work, is how are our systems, and this is a bigger systems level question. It like takes away the failure on the adults who are in front of kids every day. But it's like starts at the top, right? Like, how is our enrollment system speaking to our IEP system? How do we know what classrooms kids are supposed to be in? And when we are going through a registration process year over year for schools, that kids are placed in the right classrooms and schools have those. And there may be, there are, you know, this is a question of equity. Like, it may mean you have less general, a typical general education classrooms in a particular school than was originally promised. But like, we have to place our most vulnerable kids first in classrooms so that we make sure that they're getting served and then layer on top of it our general education students. And right now, I feel like we are in a system where we are putting everyone in school at the same exact time and we continue to not meet on the, on the floor, compliance is the floor, not the ceiling, right? We continue to be in a space where we are not moving past the floor or even achieving the floor because we're trying to make too many things fit in spaces where it doesn't fit. And so I hope as part of this MOU, as part of our, our development of a strategy here, we are talking about a reimagining of our timeline for the enrollment process for BPS. And that part of that reimagination is that we're placing our most vulnerable kids first and then placing folks who are less vulnerable on top so that we make sure that those kids are getting what they need and we can serve, we know that we can serve the rest of the kids in the system.
Thank you. Are there any further questions before we move on? If not, I want to thank you Superintendent and Dr. Eccleston for bringing us this update. And we look forward to receiving the MOU and hearing what the next steps will be as we move forward in this process. Again, thank you both very much. If there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report.
I'll move.
So move.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Ms. Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera? Ms. Palango Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to public comment, the committee will hear a brief report on a schedule amendment request for Up Academy Boston and for Up Academy Dorchester. Because this is a time sensitive issue impacting the current school year, the committee will take action on this request later this evening. I'd like to invite Mike Bauer, Chief Operating Officer of Up Education Network, to please present his request. First, I'll invite the superintendent to offer introductory comments.
I don't have any introductory comments other than I support this and thank you, Mike, for being with us this evening.
All right, Mr. Bauer?
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent, and good evening, school committee members. My name is Mike Bauer and I am the Chief Operating Officer for Up Education Network. For context, Up has partnered with BPS for 10 years in Boston and we operate three schools in partnership with the district. Up Academy Boston, Up Academy Dorchester and Up Academy Holland. Tonight, I am specifically presenting an amendment to two of our Horace Mann Charter Schools, Up Academy Boston and Up Academy Dorchester, to change the length of the school year from 185 days to 180 days. After much engagement with our school community to include, to include students, families and staff, we believe this change is necessary for a number of reasons, to include closer alignment in calendars with other BPS schools, easing a scheduling burden for families that we hear year over year, creating a more sustainable school year for staff and students, and lessening the burdens for additional transportation needs and financial costs associated with that. We are more than confident that our priority of strong instruction in student learning will still continue to thrive as we still have a longer school day and, a longer school day and operate schools with 180 days as well. As with any amendment, it is required to be approved by the Boston Teachers Union, the Charter Board of Trustees and the Boston School Committee. This has been approved by the Boston Teachers Union and our Board of Trustees and we're asking for approval from you tonight in order to DESI for final approval. That concludes my, my presentation and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks. I'll now open it up to committee for any questions or comments. Okay, hearing none, I want to thank you all and the committee looks forward to taking action on this request later this evening. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have 16 speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak. And I remind you, when you have 30 seconds remaining, those who require interpretation services will receive additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name you use to sign up for public comments. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin this evening with Anka Hollister Carlson, followed by Sugie Scanell, Maria Mejia, Kelsey Brendel and Yamara Smatias. You could all please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Anka?
My name is Anka Hollister Carlson. I am a student at Boston Latin Academy and I live in Jamaica Plain. Why am I and so many students within BPS not receiving the valuable resources, information, lessons and support from sexual education classes? Sexual education provides students with the information and insight to lead healthier, safer and more complete lives. The National Sex Education Standards suggests that by the end of eighth grade, students should be confident in topics such as healthy and unhealthy relationships, the impact of social media on sexual and mental health, sexual consent, the human reproductive system, gender identity and expression, sexual identity and orientation, STDs, puberty, contraception and sexual assault. I started at BPS in kindergarten as a four-year-old. Now, as an eighth grader, after nearly a decade at BPS, I have not learned or talked about any of these topics in health class or ever taken a sex education class. At 14 years old, I and the students around me should be having consistent sex education classes. It is ridiculous that we have not all received information particularly about the topic of puberty, a process that many of us have already started to go through. According to an article published by the Journal of Adolescent Health titled "Three Decades of Research: The Case for Comprehensive Sex Education", sexuality education is most effective when begun early and before sexual activity begins. As well, several studies provide ample support for teaching that builds on previous lessons and or grades and for programs of longer duration. Building an early foundation and scaffolding learning with developmentally appropriate content and teaching are key to long-term development of knowledge, attitudes and skills that support healthy sexuality. BPS needs to realize the shortcomings of its sex education program and address the needs of its students. We need a systematically implemented quality sex education program in BPS that begins before puberty and lasts through high school in order to keep students safe and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now invite our Spanish interpreters to offer support for our next set of speakers. We will turn off the interpretation icon. Interpreters and the public will all be in the main room. Interpreters, please stop interpreting and mute yourself for this part of the testimony.
The procedure ahora con las personas que van a hablar en español.
Our next speaker is Sugie Scanell.
Sugie Scanell se encuentra con nosotros, señora Scanell.
Hola, buenas tardes a todos los distinguidos miembros del comité escolar.
Good afternoon, everybody, to all distinguished members of the Boston School Committee.
De la pública de Boston, gracias por la oportunidad de prestarme y abogar por mis amadas escuelas.
I do appreciate the opportunity of expressing myself and to advocate for my lovely schools. Thank you, Boston School Committee.
Mi nombre es Sugue Scanell, vivo en el vecindario de Rosin del, madre de tres niños, mi hija de nueve años. Zoe García asiste al tercer grado de la escuela bilingüe Herli.
My daughter, she's nine years old and she's going to the third grade at the Herli School. I am a mother of three children. My name is Sugue Scanell and I am a resident of Russellendale, Massachusetts. Adelante, Sugue.
Soy el padre de Steven y me siento una persona preocupada por los problemas que aceptan a nuestros estudiantes y sus familias.
I'm an organizer, I'm a parent, that community advocate and I'm very concerned about the difficulties that the students are confronting and the families are confronting as well, that's cool.
Ya que son muchos los inconvenientes.
Sense community, adelante, perdón, adelante.
Ya que son muchos los inconvenientes que hay que enfrentar cada día en las escuelas, los cuales podrían ser aliviados.
You have to consider that there are multiple challenges that they have to confront on a single day and that these challenges could somehow be alleviated.
El día de hoy me encuentro aquí abogando porque en una reunión me enteré que el grupo de trabajo de estudiantes-aprendices del idioma inglés como segundo idioma, Task Force.
I am a meeting right here.
Y el Task Force.
I am in the meeting as well and I was informed that actually the ILL TF, the English Language Learners Task Force, I was informed that.
Sentero usted, continúe.
No tendrá su presentación pública frente al comité de las escuelas públicas, como suele hacerse todos los años.
They will not have a presentation in front of a school committee as they usually do every year. They came to my knowledge that the ILL TF will not have that presentation in front of the committee.
Algo que no puede ser pasado por alto y que este comité debe reconsiderar las decisiones por diversas razones.
That is something that cannot be ignored and that this has to be considered and there are different circumstances.
Actualmente, casi la mitad de la comunidad escolar de BPS tiene el idioma inglés como su segundo idioma.
So you have to consider there are approximately 50% of the population of the Boston Public Schools, they do have English as their second language.
Hablan y se comunican en un idioma diferente al inglés en su casa con sus familias.
We have to consider as well that they communicate and they speak a different language other than English at their homes.
Por eso es un punto esencial en la educación, enseñar a los estudiantes en su idioma primario al igual que van aprendiendo el idioma inglés.
That is absolutely critical, that part of the education is an instruction that takes place in both their native language and the language that they will learn at school as well, in their education.
Gran parte de la problemática es el bajo rendimiento en las pruebas MCAS. No hay un plan para corregir esos problemas, y es muy urgente crear soluciones a corto, mediano, y largo plazo.
You have to consider as well different measurements and different data points, such as the low performance that is being seen in the MCAS test, the state test. And there has to be a plan, not only immediately, but in the short term and the long term as well, to be able to create solutions for this.
Ha pensado alguno de nosotros lo difícil que es para un niño que tiene una necesidad especial y no tiene acceso al lenguaje de su casa. En clase solo habla inglés como su primer idioma.
You have to consider as well how difficult that could be for a kid or a child with a special need, the difficulties that present yourself not having access to a native language, and sometimes the difficulties of accessing the curriculum in a language that is not theirs.
La comunicación es una herramienta esencial del aprendizaje. Los niños no pueden aprender lo que no entienden.
It is absolutely critical. Communication is critical in any learning process. Kids cannot understand, cannot learn what they do not understand.
Su lengua materna, su étnica, su cultura. Mantener su idioma natural nos permite mantener vivos y latentes nuestros brazos afectivos familiares.
It is critical in order to be able to maintain our affectionate nexus that connects us, the points in common, to be able to think about the culture, think about the ethnicity, think about those critical things that to keep alive, those roots that connect us.
Otro orden. Es muy lamentable la tragedia ocurrida el día de ayer en la escuela primaria Robden Texas. Esos críperes enlucen al mundo.
That is very unfortunately what transcribed yesterday, that tragedy that occurred in Texas, that is something that is shadowing the world itself. It is very unfortunately what happened yesterday in Texas.
Dios te consuele todas esas familias y esa comunidad. Es importante y urgente para nosotros en Boston trabajar con la salud emocional post-pandemia, hacer evaluaciones psicológicas rutinarias, establecer métodos y mecanismos de seguridad de gran eficacia en las escuelas.
So it is important to be able to implement all mechanisms that are regarding the safety. It is important to be able to implement all the psychological needs and the emotional needs that this kid could need in supporting her to be able to have an education.
Gracias, Ms. Scanell.
Muchas gracias, señora Scanell.
Our next speaker is Maria Mejia.
María Mejía se encuentra con nosotros. Señora María Mejía se encuentra con nosotros.
Sí, hola, buenas tardes, buenas noches, a los miembros del comité de BPS y autoridades correspondientes.
Yes, good evening to everybody, the Boston School Committee and the corresponding authorities.
Mi nombre es María Mejía, vivo en la comunidad de Roxbury, y mi hijo estudia en la escuela Blasto.
I'm Maria Mejía, I am a resident of Roxbury and my son goes to the Blackstone School.
Soy una madre que estoy involucrada en la educación de mi hijo. Siempre participo en la reunión del aprendiz del inglés, del idioma inglés, a pesar de que mi hijo tiene un IP.
Yeah, my mother said I'm very involved in my child's education. I always participate in every ELL meeting despite the fact that my son has an IP and individualized education plan.
Quiero que mi hijo se sienta orgulloso tanto en la escuela como en la casa. Me siento feliz de saber que mi hijo habla en español con mi familia porque no hablan en inglés.
I am very proud. It is important that he engages at school and at home as well. I am very proud of him as well because he speaks Spanish with my family. They do not speak English.
No quiero que mi hijo pierda sus raíces, sus descendencia de la cultura latina.
So it is my intention for my son not to lose his roots and his culture as well, that he has to do with the Hispanic culture.
BPS debería siempre de apoyar, valorizar nuestros idiomas junto al idioma del inglés.
So it has to be the BPS's position to always support languages and value different languages and support of English language as well.
Deberían tener un plan para desarrollar las escuelas.
There has to be a planning place to be able to develop schools.
También mi idioma español en este siglo XXI ha sido de básica de aprendizaje, como también lo es el idioma en inglés.
This century that we are living right now, Spanish has been a basic thing to learn, and as critical as English has been as well.
No permitir que mi hijo, tu hijo, sea intimidado o hacerles bullying porque hablan otros idiomas de otra cultura de cualquier parte del mundo. No apoyemos eso.
We have to not to support that our kids are being intimidated, that our kids are being bullied because of the fact that they do speak a different language and they do represent a different country. We should not encourage or nor support that.
Me gustaría que los aprendices del idioma inglés se tomen en cuenta, ya que esta ciudad de Boston es compuesta por una diversidad cultural.
So I would hope that the ELL population of students are taken into consideration considering the diversity by which this city is confirmed here, that city is Boston.
Quiero tomar el tema de la seguridad de nuestras escuelas con carácter de urgencia.
So I'd like to mention the safety topic as an urgent matter of discussion.
Debe tener prioridad la integridad de la familia cuando se desestabiliza en una situación así.
You have to consider number one, the how important it is not to disintegrate the families when they're disintegrated because of situations that like this happen. It is very important.
No vuelven a tener jamás paz en sus vidas.
They will never have peace back in any of their lives.
No quisiera estar ni un cuarto de un segundo los zapatos de esa familia.
I would not like to be not even for a fraction of a second in the shoes of the families.
Entonces, no debemos esperar que esto pase aquí, como lo están viviendo, como lo vivieron la gente de la escuela de Sandy Hook en Conérico.
Therefore, we should not wait for that to happen as things happen in that particular school in Connecticut.
Parla en Florida y ahora en ValdeTesa.
The school in Florida as well and the other school in Texas, we should not allow that to happen here.
Twenty seconds.
Veinte segundos, señora.
Y de lo que iba a vivir la escuela de Maine que encontraron una lista de las personas que iban a hacer una masacre en esta semana. Ellos dieron partes a las autoridades.
We have to consider as well the list that was found in Maine regarding a planning of a massacre, event of which the authorities had knowledge, massacre that was going to take place in Maine.
Debemos apoyar nuestras escuelas, la seguridad ante todo con un detector de metal. Por favor, cuidemos nuestros niños que son el futuro de la comunidad, de nuestra ciudad, de nuestras familias, y de este país. Y seamos más... Y seamos más...
Adelante, María, adelante.
Y seamos más conscientes de lo que está pasando acerca de la seguridad, de la integridad de las escuelas. Muchas gracias.
So we have to consider what is happening right now, this safety concerns, the integrity of the schools themselves. It is, it must be a priority, the safety of schools with the implementation of metal detectors and things of such measures to protect the safety and integrity of every student. Thank you very much for allowing me to participate.
Thank you.
Bueno, me trataré así, señora Mejía.
We will now activate the interpretation icon, and all interpreters will be sent to your channels, and you can begin interpreting again. Our next speaker is Kelsey Brendel.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much to the committee for inviting parent voice and comment and valuing it as you have and continue to do. I, as usual, end up throwing my notes to the wayside because I learned so much more hearing the speakers before me, and it inspires, you know, what is most important, but I really, first of all, I'm from Boston, have a special ed student, young child, who's seven years old, a little boy, is also medically fragile. And I really want to talk briefly but emphatically about special education and who these families are and to remind this committee and anyone else listening why you don't see us, which is often an accident, but after reading the report, sometimes it's also just an oversight that frankly, at this point, we can't afford to make and watch anymore. These families, special ed families, one of the reasons you don't see them a whole lot is that nobody really does. We are hard pressed to come to meetings like this. These are students with disabilities, both severe and profound and mild, but for all of the same reasons that parents in this room and families, you know, with every well intention, show up at grocery stores and libraries and everywhere else with their kids. These are the families that good parents, and all of us are those, say, you know, let that person go first, or be sure that you look them in the eye. Our kids with disabilities, I've said many times, are experts in being unseen. We mastered the gifts of isolation well before anyone had to do it during the pandemic. And I want to remind this group what those students look like because frankly, after reading the DSC report, it should bring to light why this is no longer about areas for growth or what are positive findings. These are not challenges, they are emergencies, and they have remained emergencies for a very, very long time. And with, again, all the good intentions in the world do not change that this is not about who has control, receivership. It's about responsibility, and frankly, we have used those terms and that proposal and all of those topics on the table as distractions. They are distractions, just like other words we have used frequently and for three years have also been distractions. We have managed, as a collective community and a district, to hide behind COVID and acronyms and Zoom calls and transitions and reports and data points and using the word priority, which last time I checked means done first because it matters more. And those kids, our kids, don't matter more than anyone else's, but given what they have to do to even achieve a modicum of success in a district that says they put the values of students with disabilities first and foremost because it would take a month of Sundays for each one of those students to achieve what a typically developing learner can. I want to remind the committee, we are not talking about kids with mild struggles and when we talk about the span of time that has elapsed here in three years, I remind you as parents, as educators, as community builders, this is the amount of time that goes by between being a three-year-old and a six-year-old. Think of that amount of time that these kids have not been put first. They are not priorities. And frankly, it's dehumanizing, and it's certainly not for lack of effort, but as a point of just clarification about tonight and this month and the timeliness of the report, the Office of Special Education was meant, you know, to meet and present with families tonight. And I must remind all of you to have been told again that that would not happen in favor of what was convenient for them to happen sometime in the fall. Is, again, dehumanizing, and it is exactly the point. We talk about a memo of understanding, but we need to start referring to a memo of understanding urgency. We talked about it three years ago. The word has been used several times, and we must... Yes, thank you so much. I would just say thank you again to the committee for listening and remembering who those students are and why priority and urgency matters. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yamaris Matias, followed by Michael Heischman, Sharon Hinton, Roxy Harvey, Tanya Del Rio, and Anne Hernandez. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Yamaris Matias.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Yamaris Matias. I live in Southam. I'm a mother of two, and my oldest attend to the Ultra Gardens. I'm here tonight to spread to you what I think is the importance of having the love of language to be part of the curriculum in our kids' schools. I believe that kids should not lose their fair language they speak at home. It's very important to make it a part of their academic education. We all know having people bilingual or multilingual is being essential for BPS, also for American fields, even in politics. Why not have this part of their school program? I know BPS is in the process of training teachers to become interpreters for parents who doesn't speak any English. But I would like to express that having a good quality interpretation is essential when it comes to evaluation in our kids' IPs and file forwards. A miscommunication can affect our kids' evaluation of how they learn at schools. We need more bilingual teachers at BPS. Remember, our kids are the future, a major future full of advantage and opportunities to have wonderful professional careers. Also, as I heard, the English Language Learners Task Force was not allowed to give the report as they have done it before, in years before, at the end of this year. I think it should be a priority to have suggestions and keep it in mind that we will start the 22th, 23rd with a new superintendent. English learners and the English learner with special needs, especially students, have the same rights as everyone else. Please make the time and the space to hear this report. It should be helpful for our English learners. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Heischman.
Mike Heischman, Dorchester, Baja. Our Commonwealth has set up an apartheid educational system. MCAS, the Massachusetts Child Abuse System, was established in order to misjudge that wealthy white children who live in wealthy white suburbs were getting an excellent education in their well-resourced schools, while low-income children of color who live in low-income communities perform poorly, as planned by our Commonwealth, in their underperforming schools. History has shown that DSC takes control and turns underperforming schools into test preparation factories. This promotes instability and turmoil, hurts children, and damages school communities, fails to raise their racist test scores, and despite their failures, remain in control forever. Governor Baker and Commissioner Riley, two white males, are now attempting to white mail Mayor Woo into accepting more state control over our public schools. I am very appreciative for all the people, including our allies outside of our city, who have stood up against this most recent racist hostile takeover. Thank you, Ms. Mercer, for your testimony and your leadership. Instead of receivership, communities like our city deserve apologies and reparations from our Commonwealth. In almost all of our state's 351 cities and towns, the elected school committee has the power to appoint, evaluate, and fire their school leader, not in Boston. The school committee gave Dr. Casillas a positive evaluation and extended her contract. Mayor Woo, with no transparency or public reasons, fired our superintendent and initiated a rapid emergency search for a replacement. fired our superintendent and initiated a rapid emergency search for a replacement. I have zero confidence that we will find a suitable new leader. Learning organizations need to constantly evaluate their work. Dr. Casillas, I respectfully request that you submit a fond report evaluation of your three years as our school leader. Thank you, Dr. Casillas, for your work in behalf of our children and our community. What is the status of the role of central office in the Mission Hills School scandal? When will all of our children attend healthy, safe, and modern school facilities? If you fail to plan, you're planning to fail. The Bill BPS Plan initiated in 2017 never had a clear public timeline, specific budget, or focus on equity. It has been a disaster for many of our children, their families, and their school communities.
Twenty seconds.
As we transition to Mayor Woo's Green New Deal, the public deserves an honest report from Bill BPS, including successes and disasters. Without such an evaluation, which would demonstrate that lessons have been learned, I'm concerned that the GND will end up being the same old story. We will need community engagement and a clear equitable roadmap in order to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Hinton isn't signed into the meeting, so our next speaker will be Roxy Harvey.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Roxy Harvey and I'm a Dorchester resident and the current chair of Boston's Fed PAC. I have two children with special education needs and also am an education surrogate. I'm speaking tonight to urge this committee, the mayor, and the superintendent to urgently address the persistent issues in special education. While we were expected to receive an update on the Office of Special Education strategic plan, along with a presentation from our group's Fed PAC and the English Learner Task Force, the reports have now been kicked down the road until the fall. This is a disservice to our families. While we certainly have some areas of strength, our current district practices fail to create an environment where special education students and English learners are supported to meet the very goals and guardrails established a year ago by this committee. These problems existed before the pandemic and have been exacerbated, as is indicated by the many special education family voices that have repeatedly said, "The district does not act with urgency for our children", including many of our Black and Latinx special education students that are rubber stamped into substantially separate, separate settings as early as age three. This disproportionate placement of Black and Latinx students is a direct result of the culture of racism that is systematically embedded within BPS. The most recent leader of the Office of Special Education, Dr. Eskrim, gave me a clear example of this culture of racism as her administrative assistant labeled my black face as angry. And in notes from a brief meeting in which I uttered two clarifying comments, while I was disappointed, it was not shocking or even new, which is even more disappointing, right? I have experienced this kind of treatment before and in my role as chair of Fed PAC, I frequently received calls from families who experienced these forms of racially motivated retaliation, labeling and stigmatization, while trying to get legally required support for our students. This is a culture that hires a senior special education official who thinks it's okay to racially stereotype parents without taking any responsibility. This is a culture that dehumanizes families and our students. This result is a complete lack of prioritization for special education because inaction does speak volumes also. I want each of you to plug your loved ones' names into the statement on, on the impact on page 63 in the Special Education section of DESI. Because when I read that statement, it's personal. This is an impact on my child's life and on the lives of so many other children. The changes, the challenges impede Jerry's access to high-quality education, prevent appropriate peer interactions with other students, and ultimately limit Brandon's preparedness for post-secondary career and education options. Without immediate steps, frustrations, and mistrust among families and other key stakeholders will continue to increase and Stephen will miss out on critical opportunities to learn, develop, and thrive. In summary, I am asking this committee and the mayor to move urgently to address the persistent problems in special education by doing the five, the following five action steps. One, create a mayoral special education cabinet. Two, establish a school committee's special education task force. Three, immediately require BPS to publish special education policy and procedure manuals that they are using. Provide family, four, provide family quality service metrics following all IEP meetings where anonymous results go to the Office of Special Ed and Fed PAC. And finally, five, appoint qualified and culturally competent leadership to lead reform of special education in BPS. Thank you for your time and for taking and for asking some very important questions tonight about the state of special education.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Our next speaker is Tanya Del Rio, followed by Anne Hernandez, Ruby Reyes, Bethany Moffey, Griselda Polanco, and Sharon Dora. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Tanya? Tanya, if you wish to speak, could you please accept the prompt? Okay, let's try Anne Hernandez. Oh, Anne, you're muted.
And you will think after all these years of Zoom, I will know how to do that.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anne Hernandez. I'm a resident of Roslindell and I'm a school-based social worker at the John D. O'Brien School of Math and Science. I have been a social worker for 22 years, the last 15 with BPS. I'm an immigrant from the Dominican Republic who has been in Boston for the last 32 years and attended the Curly Middle School, Burke High School, and graduated from Boston Technical High School, which is now the O'Brien. I am testifying today to argue, to urge the school committee to schedule more negotiating sessions and to settle a fair contract before the end of the school year. As a social worker who sees day-to-day the impact that supportive and non-supportive systems have in the development of students, both academically and emotionally, I, I want to focus on the dire need to increase the capacity to support students and their families. Our union's current demands, which in my opinion is the bare minimum, is that we have one psychologist for every 500 students, one guidance counselor for every 250 students, one social worker for every 300 students. I say that this is the bare minimum because the need is beyond these numbers and the lack of adequate number of staff impacts the level of care we can provide in a timely, responsible, and ethical fashion. In my school, there are three social workers for a school community of over 1,500 students. As the social worker supporting grades 10 through 12, there are over 800 students in my cohort. And on any given week, I support over 30 students with individual counseling, crisis response, risk assessments, consultation with teachers and families, and connecting them with resources outside of school. All this while supporting staff as needed. It is insulting and demoralizing to know the negotiations are not progressing and that the district is unwilling to put these minimum demands in writing. We are all well aware the contracts are designed to protect the integrity of workers who in turn protect the integrity of what they do. Since the pandemic first hit, we have seen the city make some investments in mental health supports for students, such as increasing the number of social workers in the district. Yet many social workers are in buildings as the sole mental health provider, crisis responder, and at times, their time is used to serve as the plug-in for any other staff member not in the building. I want to remind you of some of the demands we're fighting for. Educators will reflect more of our students, and I'll be explicit. We need to not just hire but create systems that retain more non-white educators, many who have been systematically pushed out of the district by oppressive, unsupportive, and racist practices and behaviors. The lip service is infuriating. Fair and equitable pay for educators in non-traditional schools. And last but certainly not least, increasing the capacity of the district to support the mental health and social emotional needs of students and communities. If your child was in one of our schools, how would you staff it?
If you could please step out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's try Tanya Del Rio.
Hi, sorry for the mix-up just now. Am I good?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you to the chair and to the committee. I'll be really brief. I'm just here to speak in favor of a fair contract for the Boston Teachers Union and specifically to highlight the really important demands, specifically demands two and three in their housing justice section, where they're talking about the scaling of a pilot that's meant to house as, as many as 4,000 children in the BPS system that are experiencing housing insecurity, as well as exploring no evictions during the school year. I think in the many, many, many conversations I've recently had, both with teachers and families, the effects of gentrification all over the city are causing displacement that has its effects and is felt strongly in, in classrooms. When one single classroom is losing three, four, five, six children during the course of one school year, all of the effort that teachers have invested in building relationships and, you know, creating growth in terms of the student learning, it, it doesn't get measured and, and it doesn't get reflected in the, in the numbers that we see as families reflected about the growth or the performance of our schools. And I think during the pandemic, many of us parents saw the great effort and the great commitment that BPS especially staff have in the learning of our kids. And so I think housing is linked to school performance. I think many of us can see that intersection clearly and I do think it belongs in, in the contract. So I would urge you to consider that and appreciate the time allotted to us in this public comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruby Reyes.
My name is Ruby Reyes and I'm the Executive Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance. Yesterday at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Board meeting, Mayor Woo, Councilors Kendralada, Ed Flynn, Gabriela Coletta, Ruth Lujean, B-SAC representatives Josiana Colón and Zyra Mercer, as well as many other Boston leaders, majority Black and Latino, gave testimony adamantly against state receivership. BPS parents, students, and community leaders are doing everything they possibly can to fight this political, not academic or student-focused decision. State receivership is not about improving academics or improving special ed services. In cities where the state has taken over, state receivership is in fact hurting students, especially those with disabilities because of the extreme focus on test preparation. The presentation about the report from BPS was pure gaslighting. BPS is nowhere near a national model on anything. It is a report that is more than sobering and requires major action from you all as governance, not as recommendations. Many of us have been saying some of the things in the report for several years now. You can't say you didn't know. However, state receivership is not the answer. You can do that by becoming a body that does more than just rubber-stamp presentations filled with sugar-coated excuses. Jerry, you talked about how you felt at the DESI meeting. Many of us feel that way every two weeks when we come to these school committee meetings. The reason many of us are fighting receivership, not defending BPS, but fighting receivership is because we know receivership will make things worse. Peter Piazza is an evaluator, was an evaluator for the Springfield Empowerment Zone. This is a group of schools that DESI put under receivership in 2014. Piazza was an evaluator from 2015 to 2018, shared some of his reflections in a Commonwealth magazine editorial. Some of his observations included the extreme focus on test preparation, citing an example of one school only offering social studies in the seventh grade and another doing away with theater, art, and all foreign languages to institute more test preparations to increase MCAS scores. He wrote, "Although the focus on test preparation clearly affected all students, the impact was most troubling on special education students. The treatment of special ed students in Boston is a focal point in DESI's current review. In my time as an evaluator, I did not see a promising model for special education support. Instead, leaders created barriers to mainstreaming or used harsh discipline in place of more nuanced social emotional support."
Thirty seconds.
Receivership in any form, from our own endeavor and appalling to the entire Lawrence Public Schools, has shown through evidence-based results that the state has failed them through the different forms of receivership. For families who believe that you will receive better services and supports under state receivership, you will not. Currently, no school or school district has ever gotten out of state control and the data shows receivership has failed students. This is a critical time when the families and school communities of BPS need you as a school committee to rise to the level of leadership of our families. As Beja, we ask that you again do something. Stand in solidarity with the rest of Boston at bare minimum. Sign a resolution adamantly opposing state receivership of any kind. But more so, start doing more things, like even asking questions, because that hasn't happened, as we have seen, and the rubber stamping needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Bethany Moffey is not signed into the meeting, so our next speaker will be Griselda Polanco, followed by Sharon Dora, Danielle Turney, and Edith Bazile. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Griselda?
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, distinguished school committee members. My name is Griselda Polanco. I am a Boston resident, a mother, a volunteer activist, and I usually collaborate with Councilor Mejia in different projects that involve the Latino community. I'm also an English language learner who has a daughter who despite being born in the United States, her third language is Spanish. Something that is unique about the United States is that we don't have an official language. This is an immigrant country, a country that is supposed to welcome all people from all different languages background. In our school, however, English language learners often fall behind because we are not creating good learning opportunities for them. A lot of students go to English language classes with teachers who cannot understand their students in their native language. How do we learn if we don't practice good communication skill? If we are not communicating in each other, with each other, we are not learning. Being a native language speaker is a asset to our students and we need to create a pathway for a student to celebrate their native language. We need to do a better job of hiring bilingual teachers and we also need to make sure that we are creating supportive language learning environment for English, English learning with disability. They have already a barrier. Let's not add another one. As we continue the search for a new superintendent, it is important that we find someone who is going to see English learners as a priority and is going to work alongside the English Language Learning Task Force to implement, implement their recommendation. On behalf of Councilor Mejia, I urge you to please continue to work alongside the English Language Learners Task Force and do more to create a space for English learners in our school. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Dora.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Dora and I am a resident of Roslindell and the parent of a third grader at Manning Elementary. This is the third consecutive meeting where I have provided testimony on this topic, the bullying and mistreatment my son with autism has endured and the failure of Manning and district leadership to take effective action. DESI's report points to the inadequate system for parent complaints about student safety. DSE's report points to the inadequate system for parent complaints about student safety, including failure to respond in a timely manner. So I'd like to provide you with some specific examples of those delays. One hundred and ninety nine days. That's the amount of time that it took for someone in BPS to contact the families of the boys who were bullying and mistreating my son. One hundred and ninety nine days from our first written report of bullying, despite the fact that the behavior continued from September until mid-April. Two hundred and eighteen days. That's the amount of time that it took for the school to complete a bullying specific safety plan for my son. The plan did not include the word bullying, and it made reference to alleged aggressors, despite a BPS report substantiating the bullying. One hundred and twenty. That's how many days we've been waiting to hear from the Director of Succeed Boston, who leads the district's work in bullying prevention and intervention. She's not followed through on the actions she outlined to us in January, nor has she returned our eight attempts to contact her. One hundred and fourteen days. That's the amount of time that has passed since we began working with the Deputy Superintendent of Academics to address our complaints about Manning's staff. He's failed to follow through on his early promises and to answer recent specific questions. Additionally, the Special Education Office has not addressed FAP violations committed by Manning staff. We've not received apologies from any Manning staff members. Eighty-two days ago. That's when I provided bullying resources at the district's request, including the name of a program at Children's Hospital that specializes in recognizing and responding to the bullying of children with disabilities. These resources have not been used. I would like to provide you with one more number. Eight. Eight is the number of minutes that my son with autism spent wandering the neighborhood off of school grounds after a paraprofessional allowed him to walk out of school, and she failed to report it in a timely manner. She denied his request to use the bathroom, and when he walked away from her, the same boys bullying him began waving and saying goodbye. He was found nearly ten minutes later soaked in his own urine. I have nightmares about that experience every night, thinking how lucky we are that something worse didn't happen to him. I said this to you the first time I spoke on April 27th, but it bears repeating. My son's experience in an inclusion setting has been the worst exclusion he has ever experienced. I am opposed to receivership, but it's clear that BPS cannot police itself, but it will not police itself. So I asked this committee and the mayor to please intervene to make immediate improvements. If the basic safety and dignity of the district's most vulnerable students is not a priority to you, then I ask you what is. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Danielle Tierney.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Committee Members. I'm a lifelong Dorchester resident, mother of three, including my oldest son, who is significantly disabled. I would just like to read a I would just like to read a few quotes from the DSE report released earlier this week, since my version seems to be totally different than the one Drew is referring to, Dr. Eccleston. Sorry. BPS not providing adequate services for special education in accordance with the law, end quote. Quote, most vulnerable students continue to suffer from lack of focused attention, end quote. District has failed to effectively serve most vulnerable students. End quote. Quote, little to no progress, end quote. Quote, systemic disarray, end quote. Quote, lack of appropriate internal controls, end quote. Since making a commitment to address special education in the MOU at DSE, nearly forty percent of central office leaders have left the district. Meanwhile, we have not heard from special education in a profound way since 2019. The indifference is offensive. I feel negligent as a parent sending my intellectually disabled child into an environment where the leadership fails to prioritize his and a lot of others' needs after repeatedly being told to do so. It's a scary situation when the district has a signed agreement with DSE, the state, and remains out of compliance. What hope do families have to get them to comply? School committee members, respectfully, respectfully, where is the accountability? Where is the accountability from the city council, from the mayor? Our families see the urgency in this, do you? We feel like this every day, not just following a shooting. We're asking the school committee to act with urgency and convene a citywide task force immediately dedicated to addressing the severe deficiencies in special education. We want to live here. We don't have access to education that we feel safe in. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edith Bazile.
Thank you and good evening. I am here to talk about the culture of racism embedded in the Office of Special Education, which interferes with our students and families getting the support, respect, and services to which they are entitled. On Friday, May 20, 2022, Dr. Ekstrom, Senior Advisor for Special Education, asked to meet with me as a direct response to my advocacy work. I asked Roxy Harvey, Chair of the SPED PAC, to join us in this meeting. Dr. Ekstrom stated she invited her administrative assistants to, quote, "answer questions I may not be able to answer," end of quote. During this meeting, we expressed that it would be unfortunate if the district did not share a strategic plan for improvement for special education due to all of the issues and the urgency that needed to be addressed prior to the end of the school year. The administrative assistant took notes, which I asked her to share. The notes were shared with us, but they did not reflect our conversation. Rather, included false statements and racist tropes of us as angry Black women. The notes began with, quote, "Nadine asked Edith to this meeting to answer allegations," end of quote. Why does asking for a timeline for a strategic plan for special education constitute an allegation? The notes further state, Nadine, quote, "explains how she came to be hired when asked by Edith," end of quote. I never asked this question. The notes state, "I made, quote, disrespectful comments," end of quote. Why do my statements warrant a description of disrespect? She continues with, quote, "Edith, just name calling." And again, Edith calls her a liar, end of quote. There was no name calling in this conversation. The fact that the administrative assistant created racist notes editorializing what she thinks of Black families and created a document with a false narrative must not be ignored. This is an example of how special education weaponizes its staff to silence and shame Black families who dare challenge social inequities and seek fair treatment. Kimberly Crenshaw states, "This is a form of social control to punish Black voices who don't follow the social norms of centering whiteness by remaining passive, non-threatening, and unseen."
Thirty seconds.
This is how Black families are treated by the district and why our Black students are at the bottom of achievement. BPS must not protect a culture that works to shut down the voices of Black families. We demand BPS take immediate action and hold its employees accountable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to all of those who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is extremely important to us. Our first action item this evening is grants for approval totaling $955,926. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Are there any questions on grants? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Your motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPara? Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The grants are approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our next action item is a vote regarding the district's participation in the Mass School Choice Program for school year 2223. The committee held a public comment on this issue earlier this evening. The superintendent has recommended that the Boston Public Schools hereby withdraws from the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year 2223 based upon a number of factors. I will now turn it over to Acting Chief of Family and Community Advancement Denise Snyder, who will provide the superintendent's recommendation.
Good evening, Madam Chair and School Committee Members. I'm here tonight to ask for your consideration on the matter of the state school choice program for the coming school year 202223. This is a matter that requires your vote annually. As you may recall, the Education Reform Act of 1993 amended the Mass School Choice Law, establishing a presumption that each school committee will admit non-residents under the school choice program unless there is a vote to the contrary by June 1st each year. I want to take just a couple of minutes to outline our considerations of the issues regarding student assignment in space. The reality is that many of our families register in the months of July, August, and September, often through October. As such, we would risk assigning non-resident students ahead of those who live in the city, limiting access to some of our schools for our own residents. Cost implications are also an issue as we would need, as we would be obliged to serve any students who registered from outside of Boston who may need access to specialized services, such as programs for English learners and for special education. Since some of our neighboring districts do not offer the same level of services, a failure to withdraw from the school choice program could result in an influx of students from other communities requesting seats in specialized programs, resulting in unbudgeted costs. And speaking of neighboring districts, last year, 150 school districts, including Boston, did not participate in the school choice program. None of the communities surrounding Boston participated. Without their involvement, there would be no reciprocity, rather just a potential influx from neighboring communities into Boston Public Schools. So with these considerations, we recommend that the school committee vote to proactively withdraw from participation in the state school choice program for the coming school year 202223. And we recommend that this vote take place tonight in order to meet that deadline of June 1st. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. I'll now open it up to the committee for any questions or comments.
Ms. Robinson, I just have one thing to add.
Thank you. To contend with.
Although I don't differ in or quibble with what Ms. Snyder said, I do come from Minnesota that has open choice laws for all of our students and allows them to choose and pick their school as long as you can get your child there. And then in some cases of integration, transportation is provided, and districts are given the funds to to transport students. I do think that in the future, not now, but once Boston Public Schools is well on its feet to serving its students with special education and EL, as well as looking at its own home-based assignment system, this could be a pro-enrollment strategy as Boston becomes more competitive and attractive to communities, and it could be something that could be used to pro-integrate schools throughout the region with first ring suburbs. Sort of like a reverse Medco program. I would encourage the district to look into this for the next couple of years as a potential strategy for enrollment and also improvement as we look to seek to have integrated schools. I don't think we're ready for that now, so I I support this now. But I do think in the future could offer additional choice to families, which I think is always good, and also provide an opportunity for Boston to show its best side to the region and the greater Boston area.
Thank you, Superintendent. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Dr. Casellas, you took the words right out of my mouth. I don't think we are probably ready for this right now. But I do think this is a strategy for us to keep on the table, one that can help drive more integrated schools and also one that can help us address some of our enrollment decline issues. I do hope as a school committee, but also as a system, we start thinking about the targets that we would set in which would allow us to start having that conversation. And so what metrics would we want to have in place and meet in order to bring this for a deeper discussion as a possible solution for those two things that we were talking about earlier? And maybe that could be something that your team brings back to us as a recommendation. When we hit X, Y, and Z targets, we think this could be something for the district to consider.
Thank you. Dr. Alkins? Oh, no. Any other comments, questions? All right. So thank you, and I will now entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to withdraw the Boston Public Schools from the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year 2223. I want to be clear, a yes vote means that the district hereby agrees not to participate in the choice program. Doc, I mean, Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
I just have one more question for just to clarify, and I'm sorry. It also means that by not participating, we don't offer that same choice for students to leave the system. Is that correct?
Students leave through the Medco system? Or they can choose charter or private?
Yes, but not through this program. You have to participate in this program to be accepting and receiving.
Yes, but like Denise said, there's not any of our regional districts who are also participating, which is if this was something that Boston would want to do, I think it would be something to have as a discussion with all the other surrounding school districts as part of a larger plan around desegregation.
Desegregation. That's that makes sense. Thank you for that.
Superintendent, just to clarify, I also believe we have a very small number of students that can go to Volk Tech programs in other cities or towns that are Volk Tech programs that we don't offer, right? Like I seem to recall, students go to an agricultural program.
That is right. If we don't offer the program, we are allowed to approve it to go to other programs.
Okay, and that is not impacted by this vote?
That is not. No, we currently have that practice now.
Right, thank you.
Okay, do I need to read the motion again, or is everybody clear? Anybody's clear? Okay. So is is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPara? Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our final action item this evening is an Up Academy Boston and Up Academy Dorchester Schedule amended request, which the committee received earlier this evening. I'll now open it up to the committee for final questions and comments. Okay, everybody all right? Okay. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Up Academy Boston and Up Academy to approve the Up Academy Boston and Up Academy Dorchester Schedule amendment request as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPara? Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our first report this evening is a summer learning update. At this time, I'd like to invite Denise Snyder, Acting Chief of Family and Community Advancement, and Alba Cruz Davis, Executive Director of Extended Learning Opportunities and Partnerships, to please present their report. First, I'll invite the superintendent to offer introductory comments.
I just want to thank the team for their incredible work trying to put together a really strong and engaging program for our students this summer, all the way from our extended school year services that go for our special needs students and our partnerships with Boston After School and Beyond, as well as our other many partners that we work with and our our school leaders to hold school right here in BPS. Was we know, and I spoke to just briefly earlier, that engaged students often do much better and that learning gap closes. So summer learning is just very critical time for us, not only for supervision of our our children and to keep them engaged and out of trouble, but also to enrich their minds and to give them new experiences that maybe they couldn't get in the classroom. So I want to thank them very much for putting this together and for partnering with our many organizations throughout the bus but city of Boston for what's going to be a very exciting summer.
Denise? Thank you, Superintendent. Um, we can bring up the slides, I think Carissa's screen sharing. Fantastic, okay. Uh, so good evening again, Madam Chair and members of the Boston School Committee, and thank you for the opportunity to present tonight with an update on our plans for an exciting and productive and enriching summer for our Boston Public School students. Co-presenting with me is Alba Cruz Davis, the Executive Director for Expanded Learning Opportunities and Partnerships. Tonight, we will plan to share with you the many ways our students will experience summer this year. We'll briefly discuss the why in which we invest in summer programs, what makes up the menu of opportunities, and how families and students are signing up. Next slide, please. So on this, let's start with the why. The research by the RAND Corporation shows that up to two-thirds of the achievement gap between low-income students and their high-income peers can be explained by unequal access to summer learning opportunities. It also shows that students who attend summer learning programs at least 80% of the time have a significant advantage over those who do not attend. Next slide, please. And so therefore, our goals are all about more opportunities for more students with more partners in more locations. And these opportunities are designed to stem summer learning loss and promote equitable literacy, promote health and wellness with our students, and really provide enrichment that develops social emotional skills and, quite frankly, makes summer fun for our kids. These goals are wrapped up in our overall mission to provide more opportunities for students than ever before, so that students have lots and lots of options. Next slide, please. And here's where we begin to talk about the what. The BPS Summer Learning Portfolio consists of an array of high-quality academic and enrichment opportunities for students in every grade level across the district. Summer in BPS also includes access to summer jobs for our youth and even some learn and earn opportunities, and we'll share more about both of these in a little bit. There are 111 learning opportunities being offered this summer. That's a really great number for us, and there are 54 school sites all across the city offering programs. These are the ones that you see pinned here. But in addition, there are programs happening in 51 non-BPS community sites across Boston as well. And thanks to our partner, Boston After School and Beyond, who acts as a partner clearinghouse for us, we're working with 84 different partners to bring an array of opportunities to students. This is actually more than a 20% increase in opportunities from last summer. Next slide, please. So the BPS Summer Learning Portfolio consists of an array of high-quality academic and enrichment opportunities for student populations in every grade level across the district. You can see on this slide, in total, we're able to engage more than 18,000 students in summer learning this year. We also work with many partners to extend earning opportunities to approximately 5,000 youth ages 14 to 24. So you can see that that is an amazing total of an opportunity to reach and connect with almost 24,000 students this summer. And we'll discuss these more further in the presentation. Next slide, please. This chart provides a few, a view of the programs by neighborhood with a commitment to communities with some of the highest need for high-quality free programming that's both challenging and rewarding. As I said, I think that just having fun this summer is also really important. And Roxbury, as you can see here, has 22 programs, for example. Dorchester has 20 programs this summer, 10 programs in East Boston, and so on and so forth. So we're really excited about that dedication to serving in communities with the highest demand for free and high-quality programming. Next slide, please. And here too is just an exciting list of 54 schools who are hosting the programs across the city. You can see the full list of schools on this slide. Those with an asterix are hosting multiple programs at their sites. And so a shout out to the schools who are collaborating with the summer programming folks to to make all of that happen. And next slide, please. And here is a list of program partner sites. I know it's tiny to read. Um, I think more important than reading every one of them at this moment is just the opportunity to acknowledge the vastness of it and to really shout out our deep appreciation for the collaboration that we have with Boston After School and Beyond. As I said, they really act as a clearinghouse for high-quality partnerships and trainings and support to make all of this happen. So at this time, I would like to invite my colleague, Alba Cruz Davis, the Executive Director for Expanded Learning Opportunities and Partnerships, to share more about each of the initiatives that we're offering this summer. Alba and her team have been tireless, and I would even say relentless in securing locations, leading the summer work group, managing logistics so that our students can access free, productive, enjoyable summer programs this year. Next slide, please, and I'll hand it over to Alba. Alba, I don't know if you're on mute.
I I am so sorry. Apologies. Um.
No worries.
So, yes. So let me start again. Thank you, Denise. On behalf of my team and the summer work group, I couldn't be happier with the program menu we've curated for our youth. Let's now look more closely at each type of initiative. Most of these are open enrollment opportunities, however, we'll note those that are by invitation only as well. Next slide, please. The largest of our offerings are fifth quarter summer learning opportunities, which are five-week programs, some of which are run by a school, while others are run by a community-based organization. Either at a school or a community-based organization or location, all feature an academic component and some offer interest-based experiences such as STEAM, sailing, soccer, or arts. We've invested heavily in more opportunities, increasing capacity by over 30% to be able to serve up to 8,000 students this summer. All fifth quarter programming options are open to BPS families. Next slide, please. Like fifth quarter, BPS summer-focused programs led by our colleagues in early childhood are open to Boston Public School students in kindergarten through grade two. While BPS host programs specifically in four sites, our early education curriculum is also being used in hundreds of locations and classrooms across sites this summer. Next slide, please. BPS will continue to offer lots of programs for special populations. This includes extended school year offered by the Office of Special Education, which provides specialized instruction or related services during the summer as part of a student's IEP, but will also provide services and supports to any child with an IEP who would like summer services. High school credit recovery programs are run by individual schools and provide a critical opportunity for students to complete or recover course credits with social emotional supports and student-centered differentiated instruction, tasks that are consistent with each school's instructional focus. Next slide, please.
OEL will continue to provide targeted support.
Excuse me, I think your slides are off. I think we're we're ahead two slides from where your presentation is.
Um.
Yeah, we got stepped somewhere along the line because we were seeing a slide that was off from what you were talking about.
Right, so if we just finished extended school year and credit recovery. So if we go from that slide 13 would be on invitation program. So you are correct in that.
It should be discussing EL summer learning and exam school initiatives.
Yeah, we seem to have dropped a slide. You know what? If we are still on extended school year and credit recovery, I think you can just speak to the additional programs for OEL and exam school initiative without the slide.
Now, the slide is there. You had just skipped over one.
Oh, interesting.
There it is. We're now seeing it, yeah. You had gone on to me.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, so we're on slide 13, correct? Yes. Yes, perfect. So with regards to OEL, we will continue targeted support for 2,000 students who are either slight, have EL levels one, two, or three, are in need of compensatory services. Another 2,500 EL students are anticipated to participate in summer learning academies in addition to these targeted EL programs. And our exam school initiative is back this summer, targeting support for roughly 650 Black and Latinx students in grades four, five, and seven, offering exam school prep program. Next slide, please. So we know that our programs can be outstanding, but if they're not accessible, then they'll go unused. To this end, we were very intentional about adding more sites in more locations where students could easily walk to programming. This, of course, includes meals that are prepared on-site and access to nurses. We also aim to expand access to extended day and to transportation, making programs more feasible for more families. Last year, transportation was only offered to ESY students. This year, we were able to add transportation for 13 sites and 19 programs. We know that all sites would benefit from transportation, however, we also had to balance this with anticipated capacity, specifically a predicted shortage of drivers during the summer. Similarly, expanded day is being offered in 17 sites for 26 programs. Next slide, please. Before I turn the presentation back to Denise, I want to walk through the budget for the summer, which is also more than previous years. We are fortunate to be able to allocate roughly $6 million in ESAR funds to ensure more programs for students this summer as we continue to work to close the pandemic-related learning loss. The costs are inclusive of staffing, curriculum, materials, transportation, meals, and extended day. Next slide, please. And now Denise.
Great, thank you, Alba. Um, so we also said there'd be something for everyone, and so I briefly want to talk about summer jobs and internships and college credit earning opportunities for our high school students. Next slide, please. This summer, Boston's youth, as I mentioned, ages 14 to 24, will have more than 5,000 opportunities to explore careers in private industry, community-based organizations, local government, and more. The vast majority of wage-earning opportunities, I'm sorry, the vast majority of these are in fact wage-earning opportunities. So summer jobs, they're back. And this year, there's also a learn and earn dual enrollment program, which is partnering with Benjamin Franklin Institute of Technology, where students can earn a wage for completing a three-credit college course that can also be used for high school credit. Next slide, please. And so I think Alma mentioned, you know, all of this is amazing, but you know, it's only as good as it is accessible. So what are we doing to help families and students know about these great options? As the list above shows, we've been outreaching families in many, many ways, large and small. We're also prioritizing our homeless students through the Homeless Education Resource Network, or HERN, also prioritizing English learners and, of course, working to keep our siblings together so that they can enjoy summer as a family. You can see on this list here, we have done everything from the automated types of calls that you would anticipate to social media, billboards with geo-tagging, working with our family liaisons. The summer program folks have trained family liaisons to support families and schools with.
I'm sorry, Ms. Snyder, we don't see that slide at all.
Yeah. Oh, all right.
We're off by two again, I think.
Yeah, Carissa, let's see, we can just advance one more, Carissa, I think. There we go. My apologies. So anyway, you can look at this brief list of ways that we're outreaching. It's it's everything and every opportunity that we hear about that we're searching. We are having, working with the community engagement team and hub schools to host opportunities at Grove Hall Library. We're out leafleting and with laptops, signing up families at Madison Park at a program just over a week ago. Um, we are at the Kite and Bike Festival. We are everywhere and we're we've trained folks to help with registration because we know that it's a little bit of a challenging process. So we're excited about the work that's happening. And at this point, I think I'll actually just turn it back to Alba who will walk through, you know, what does registration look like?
So next slide, please.
Next slide, please.
Thank you, Denise. So how do families access summer programs? There are so many options. For example, the summer stuff link provides information about programs offered outside the BPS summer offerings. These typically have related or offerings, although, and fees that are related, but some of them do include scholarships, particularly for BPS students. So those, that's something that you can check out. The summer learning link will take families. The Summer Learning link will take families to our BPS and partner programs where families can explore their options and then click on the School Mountain link. Families are invited to select several options. Some student groups will receive a priority for placement. These include our homeless students, as Denise mentioned, that are identified through the Homeless Education Resource Network, also ELs 1, 2, and 3, as well as economically disadvantaged students. Therefore, selecting more than one option helps to ensure that families receive a summer placement that they're excited about. The programs and site options in School Mountain will also include whether they offer transportation, expanded day, or meals prepared on site. We know that this can be a lot. In many ways, that's an outcome of being able to offer a lot. We have leaned heavily on our family liaisons, who have all been trained at this point, as well as our community engagement managers and individuals in the Welcome Services Department that are going to help us and are helping us with regards to registration, not only at Central Office when they come to Central Office, but also, as Denise mentioned, in many of these targeted and large events, outreach events that we've been at and that we plan on being at. So that's exciting in that we can assist families with registration. Our Welcome Center staff, as I mentioned, have also partnered with us and are able to assist families at the Welcome Centers. And of course, students interested in looking for summer jobs can click on that link and apply directly to programs from our website. So before I close, I just wanted to appreciate all of the individuals that have been involved. The planning will continue over the weeks to come, but without the group of departments that are listed here and as well as several others, because this has been an all-hands-on-deck effort, summer would not be happening. So I wanted to thank all of the departments that have been involved and especially my staff that have, as Denise pointed out, done incredible work to ensure that our students can experience summer and it's going to be a great one. Thank you again. Now.
Yeah, before we get to questions, you know what? I think I would love for us to anticipate your first question, which is what does current registration look like? So maybe we can, you know, beat you to the punchline and share where we are with that, Alba.
Oh, I'd love to. You have no idea. So when I was getting ready for this earlier in the day, we weren't quite at 3,900 and now we're over 4,000. And I just want to give you a sense of where we're at compared to last year. So that's more than twofold where we were at at this point last year. So I'm very excited about that. And that's just for fifth quarter. We're, I think it's 3,998. That was as of four o'clock today, so that's why I said over 4,000. And then in addition to that, we're at almost 800, high school credit recovery.
Right, so these are the more open enrollment type situations. And of course, we anticipate filling all of the slots that we typically offer for things like extended school year and specific, you know, English learners programming.
Thank you. Now more questions.
Thank you. Thanks to both of you. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Do you mind taking down your slide so I can see? Thank you. Can't see anybody. All right. Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Thank you for this presentation. It's great to know the investment that has gone into this. It's great to know that the enrollment is where it is right now. I think it's also a testament to the level of need that exists like currently. And when I think about, when I think about this, this is not simply an engagement strategy, but it's a re-engagement strategy for many families as well. And so in one of your slides, you talked about the staffing related to this. I was also wondering what levels have you included with regard to mental health professionals as part of this to support throughout the summer? As well as we know that this is going to be also a part of that engagement process.
Alba, do you want to take that one?
Yeah. So with regards to mental health services, we don't necessarily have mental health providers onboard per se. There are some programs that have requested social workers. So some programs do have social workers. And we do have a nurse on site at every one of our schools that are running summer programs. So we do have the facility to address any issues as they evolve.
Yeah, it's just something to also think about moving forward of, obviously, it's a, you know, it's a concern for all of our students and just thinking about the support that they'll be able to receive over the summer is just something to, just to keep in mind.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point. I'm sorry, I just wanted to toss in there that a lot of our family liaisons work throughout the summer. Actually, they all do. And so they're often a trusted point of contact in the buildings for families. But you make an excellent point in terms of, you know, looking ahead and thinking about how do we offer those direct services onsite?
Yes, and thank you so much, Denise. I can also add that as part of our training for summer, we're including our social-emotional well-being through our Office of Health and Wellness. So that's part of the PD that all of the site coordinators and site directors will be obtaining as well as teachers. Thank you.
Mr. Carden Hernandez?
Two, three things. One, thank you. How lucky are our kids and our families to have these programs? And I can imagine the level of complexity in bringing together so many different stakeholders to be able to drive this opportunity. So this is like a complicated project and it's exciting that we're able to offer so many seats to families. Three questions, just to understand. The denominator of what seats are available is how much to the current level of fill? Just because I don't have the slides up?
Oh, yes. So we're at approximately half of what we potentially, yes. And we're only at May 25th. And again, at this point last summer, I think that the number was 1,450. We're at 4,000. So we're feeling pretty good about that.
That's exciting. And so one, good news there. And you know, obviously, we all hope to see those numbers continue to drive in the right direction. The second question I have is I was going to ask the same question as Dr. Alkin, so I'm just sort of naming that, I think, for the future, particularly that knowing that the mental health crisis we are living in and through is not going anywhere. This should be part of sort of all of our systems-level planning, not just around professional development, but like on-the-ground clinical supports for kids. And so I just hope that we bring that into our planning moving forward in our after-school programming as well as our summer enrichment opportunities. But the third question I have is around special education seats. And how are we targeting, how many seats are available for families with kids with special needs? And how are we targeting and doing outreach there? And then do we have any data around the number of families who have picked up those seats?
So our ESY programs, and again, extended school year for all, is open to, I believe, up to 3,000.
There's 4,200 seats.
Yeah.
And they're typically filled.
Yes. And I think, I think we're up to 3,000. And then beyond that, as you know, to the extent that we have students that want to participate in other programs, you know, our goal is to accommodate them and that's been what we've done in the past as well. So we, and then again, each of those programs are being run at, well, not each, but for the most part, they're being run with other programs in schools, like for instance, that have other programs running concurrently with them.
Copy. I guess to sort of unpeel this more, because I think this might even just be good as families are registering and, you know, there's always like ears listening here. If, you know, and I'm thinking more specifically, I hate the sort of the generalization of special education because the complexity of needs are different. I'm thinking about families who have kids with more complex needs. Like, are these programs able to meet those needs? And I'm thinking about kids who may require sort of a one-to-one support or have social pragmatic skill deficits or delayed speech. Like, I'm curious how we are, how families are able to find the right program for their kid's unique need? And is there any sort of either hand-holding that happens through the registration process or programs that are more designed for particular needs and particular disabilities?
Yes. So again, as Denise pointed out, we have opportunities for up to 4,200 extended school year students. Those students will receive whatever services they receive during the school year. Our goal is to match whatever services they receive during the school year. So there will be parrots as well as one-on-one support. And those are being offered at several, at several sites across the city.
And special does the invitations for those seats.
Yes. So that is, that is run out of ESY. Thank you, Denise. Or with, in the Office of Special Education.
And to answer the second half of your question, I mean, families are certainly, so that's by invitation. So Office of Special Education is reaching out to families to make that an opportunity. And as they said, they would actually, even if someone wouldn't normally get ESY and they wanted to, they will make the space for that to happen.
That's really great. And the level of touch for families who have young people with special needs but are also not native English speakers?
Yep, same. So there are programs for specifically designed for English learners throughout the summer. But this year, it's really, I think, an interesting opportunity. We've taken more than half those seats and built them into more of an inclusion opportunity in all of our programming. So that's really, really exciting. So, you know, they might, if the service level needs it, they might tend towards a program that the Office of English Learners invites them to. But we have a lot of programming that will support students who are non-native English speakers.
Yes. And if I could just add to that, because as part of our response to the EL Task Force and some of the questions that came up, we did do an analysis, my team and I, to make sure that we're addressing the needs of EL students with disabilities. And we're feeling very good about being able to be responsive. We have several teachers hired for those students, EL teachers, in all the various locations. And we actually are able to tell you, if you'd like to talk offline, like some of the clusters and how we're able to address those needs, so.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. It sounds incredibly thoughtful. And I hope at the end of the summer, we can also hear from you around lessons learned. And I think as we're having conversations earlier this evening, and I know I'm out of time, but around some of those larger programmatic changes, you started with joy as sort of the sort of driving force of this work. That is the same thing that needs to be happening in our classrooms every day. And so I have a feeling there's much more synergy here around the way that we're thinking about summer programming, opportunity and access, as well as partnerships and the work that we do every single day across our school. So thank you for your leadership.
Ms. Philanco Garcia?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Gracias por la presentación. Me encanta todo lo que ustedes pusieron. Muchas felicidades. Y me gustó escuchar que ustedes tienen programas para los aprendices del idioma inglés. Entonces, específicamente, hemos hablado mucho de salvar nuestra cultura.
Thank you, thank you so much. I really liked your presentation. And I noticed that you have programs for the English learners and we are trying to save our cultures.
Entonces, si hablamos de salvar nuestra cultura, nuestro idioma nativo, me refiero a nuestro idioma nativo, ¿verdad? Escuchábamos una madre que estaba testificando y decía que es muy triste para ella que el niño cuando llega a la casa ya casi no habla español, habla más inglés porque en la escuela le dan más inglés.
When I talk about saving our cultures, I refer to our native languages. I was listening to the testimony of this mother who said she's very sad because her kid doesn't want to speak the language, her language anymore, because she speaks more English at school.
Entonces, sus abuelitos hablan español, hablan el idioma, hablan diferente idioma. Su mamá no habla inglés, entonces es un poco difícil. Yo creo que el verano, en el programa de verano, mi pregunta sería si ustedes ajustaron un tiempo, un programa, para que los niños puedan recibir un programa que sea en su idioma nativo.
So the grandparents don't speak, speak a different language. The mother doesn't speak English. And I wonder if you guys could have a program in the summer for children to learn their language, to learn their native language?
So happy to start. You know, I'll contestar en español.
Maybe.
Is that all right, Spanish interpreter? Yes, okay.
Entonces nosotros lo que hicimos este año fue intentar integrar lo más posible a los niños de cuál es el segundo idioma es inglés. Y queríamos hacer eso para no necesariamente aislar a estos niños, pero poder apropiarles una oportunidad de integrarse en todo lo que ofrece el verano. En el pasado, lo que ha pasado es que han tenido programas individualmente solamente para ELS o para niños que no hablan inglés. Entonces, esa fue una de las cosas que hicimos y intencionalmente ofreciéndoles maestros que hablan, que hablan su idioma. Eso es lo que hemos intentado hacer. Y como le indiqué en ese gráfico, no sé si lo vio, pero 2,000 de los estudiantes, ¿verdad?, van a estar en un programa que sí es EL, ¿verdad? Pero más de la mitad, 2,500 van a estar integrados en todos los programas con maestros que son bilingual. Entonces, esa es una de la manera que hemos querido mejorar las oportunidades para los niños que no hablan inglés o que, para el cual el idioma inglés es su segundo idioma. Pero su idea es una de las que queremos llevar a cabo y ser más intencional en planificarla para el verano que viene. Y gracias. Por traernos. Gracias por contestarme en español. Me encanta que me contesten en español, pero.
Thank you for answering in Spanish. I love that you answered in Spanish.
Sabes que existen abuelitos que están en las casas que estarían encantadas de que lo invitan. que estarían encantadas de que lo invitaras, a que pudieran participar en el programa, que son de comunidades que le van a hablar a los niños de las historias de sus países.
Do you know that there are grandparents in the houses who would love to be invited by you to talk to the communities about their stories in their countries?
Y esto es bueno porque esto ayuda a que el niño se identifique con su cultura, qué pasó en su país, tiene fueron los héroes. A los niños les encanta que le cuenten historias y esto lo mantiene activo y mantiene viva la la cultura de su país.
This, this, do you know how important this would be? So the children could could identify with their own countries and to learn about their heroes? Because children love to hear stories. And they would be active and they would have a life experience about what's happening.
Si si me permito un momentito, voy a contestarle, pero quiero decir a la gente lo que le dije anteriormente para darle contexto de mi respuesta. Está bien? Okay. So I just want, I just asked our our member, and and thank you so much, Ms. Filanco, to allow me the opportunity to address the fact that I didn't exactly tell you what I, I started to have a conversation with her, never shared with the rest of you who may not have understood.
There were interpretations.
There was interpretation. Oh, okay, good. Okay. So so then, so then with regards to her her current question, I'm going to continue in Spanish. Me me encanta su idea. Lo que sucede para este verano es que estas aplicaciones y los los programas que tenemos para este verano se llevaron a cabo en mediados de diciembre. Entonces, las aplicaciones se sometieron para mediados de diciembre. Y para este verano, eso sería difícil para nosotros integrar su idea. Ahora, lo que yo le puedo asegurar es que para el verano que viene y para otras oportunidades, por ejemplo, in At School, eso es algo que que yo podría traer al distrito como una idea de poder presentar en mi nuevo rol. Con la ayuda de mi jefa.
Muchas gracias. Yo sé que esto va 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 a dinamizar mucho y nuestros abuelitos y nuestra mamá se van a sentir bien contentas de hacer esto.
Thanks a lot because I know our parents and grandparents will feel very dynamic with this. And it's, this is going to be something that is going to activate all those feelings.
Gracias. Thank you.
Yes. Dr. Alkins? Anybody else? Any other questions? Denise, I'm I'm very excited about the numbers of applicants for this summer. Is there any way of making sure at every school level that through their their parents' council or, you know, their school-based equity roundtable that these messages are getting out to parents? And, you know, can we get something that back that helps us to understand by school what portion of families have created really strong summer plans for their kids? You know, I mean, I know some will be going to see grandma or be going away. But that is there a way that we can push to try to make sure that every family was aware, whether they chose to choose something or not, we can't always do. But just that, you know, it it always hurts when parents say, oh, I didn't know anything about that. And, you know, and I know with all the efforts that people do make, you know, what what kind of reassurance can we get that says that we have really done due diligence at every level to make sure parents are getting these messages? Because that communication and engagement is so important, particularly as we continue to move forward.
Really is, and it takes many, many tries to reach each person. So I absolutely think we can do that. I will work with our Family School Engagement Practices Team, who oversees all the P D for family liaisons, and we will create a plan to capture that information.
Can we see any evidence early on? You know, what types of things are people gravitating towards? Or is it all over the place?
I haven't looked at the data. Do you know, Alba?
Yes, it is. It is pretty much all over the place. I think it depends on, you know, what the interest is. And I I think, I mean, we could definitely provide you with that summative data.
It might be more helpful once people are finally in the slots that they, you know, because they can sign up for multiple things. So once we know where everyone lands, that might be better data. But to your point, Chair Robinson, you know, everyone's reason for signing up is different, whether that's proximity or a special enrichment opportunity or longer hours, you know, it's everyone's need or interest, you know, or or level of, you know, the hierarchy of needs, if you will, you know. So but I I do think it's, it probably, as Alba said, is all over the place at this point.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm I'm particularly, I'm just particularly happy to hear that we're working through multi-transportation issues and also the whole surround care issues of creating more full day with before and after-school support, you know, care so that families can actually take advantage of what is offered. So again, thank you so much for you superintendent and the leadership to to really move us towards a summer program that will really meet families' needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
We just need to get the drivers now.
Right, okay.
So I'm just, I'm just managing expectations. Done a great job of really reaching out to families. This is what we heard last year. Families said they didn't have the information. They're going out to the community. I'm so proud of this team. Alba and Denise and the whole team and what they've been doing, our school leaders who have stepped up, you know, after two years of, two, three summers of this pandemic, you know, and just they're still stepping up to say, I'm going to give more to our kids. And, you know, and our educators too. It's just amazing because so many of us just want to like take a break, you know? It's been a hard three school years, but they are still stepping up for our kids. And I just commend the team quite a bit. We got the new bus driver contract. Hopefully that makes us competitive. We're going to get going on hiring and there'll be a big push around that. We have the fresh foods coming in from City Fresh. So really excited about our new partnership with our Black-owned Roxbury Business for summer school. So maybe it will be a perfect model for how we do it right this summer, after having, you know, two and a half years of quite a struggle. So really looking forward to this summer.
I also just want to give one final shout out, which I I was on a slide, but was not said verbally. Our banner team has done massive work. But I also want to acknowledge the head of guidance and the high school team who really drive the work with the city of Boston and our other partners on the youth jobs opportunities. And I I just would be remiss not to point out that they're really driving that work and we're just the the deliverers of that great information.
And our many partners at the PICC and Sociedad Latina and other nonprofit organizations who really surround our kids and get them into these jobs and help them get applying to those jobs. And Rashad at the city office. And, you know, they just, they're really, really doing a great job of working and collaborating with us on these opportunities this summer. So hopefully a good summer.
Yes. It's going to be a great summer.
Thank you.
Speak it to the universe.
All righty. Thank you. Thank you all. We'll now move on to a superintendent search update. We'll pause for a brief moment while Superintendent Cassellius logs out of the meeting. And she will rejoin the meeting at the conclusion of this discussion. I want to welcome Dr. Pam Edinger, co-chair of the Superintendent Search Committee and president of Bunker Hill Community College. Thank you so much for joining us tonight and for providing us with an update on the search process.
Thank you, Chair Robinson. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Good. Well, on behalf of our search committee co-chairs, Lorena Lopera and Marcus McNeil, I will offer an update on on the search processes of today. On May eighteenth, the committee met in person in executive session to review current applications. There were thirty-four applications submitted, and the committee selected a subset of the candidate pool to interview virtually in executive session on June first and June second. The characteristics of the subset are very responsive to our executive profile for the for the superintendency. The poll is diverse and balanced in gender and race and ethnicity. And the poll includes those with superintendent experience, executive leaders, and candidates with local knowledge and national perspectives. It is probably of interest to note that there are two other large districts searching for superintendents right now across the country. One is Orange County, Florida, and the other is Dallas, Texas. And their respective candidate pools are fifteen and twelve. So the trend really is at this moment that there are fewer applicants at large district nationally. So with the candidate pool that we we have, we we are, we are, we're in good shape. Right? So after this first round of interview via remote, the committee will further narrow the pool for a second round of interviews, and those will be in person, but also in executive session. And those dates are June seventh and June eighth. The committee will identify finalists from this round of interviews to recommend to the school committee. And the charge of the search committee will be fulfilled once the finalists are recommended. You can hear my breathing ease at this point. So in mid-June, the school committee would then hold public interviews with these finalists. And in late June, the school committee would vote on the final selection. And that that is the that is the the process to date. I have some additional notes on engagement. Perhaps I would pause here to see if there are any questions.
Are there any questions?
Okay. Well, not hearing any. Let me go ahead and give you the engagement report then. There have been additional listening sessions in partnership with the mayor's office. Search committee members have attended additional small group listening sessions in five other B P S home languages, Haitian Creole. That one is to be scheduled. But we did have sessions in Cantonese, in Cabo Verdeano, in Vietnamese, and in Mandarin. And we continue to encourage groups who wants to share feedback to host their own session and send a summarizing memo to the search committee via email or invite a member of the search committee member to to come and listen. So we are also continuing to accept video testimony and text submissions via the search webpage and via our dedicated email address. And finally, I want to really thank my fellow search committee members for their time and dedication. I'm delighted that I'm delighted that we're on track and we're poised to deliver our recommendations in a few weeks. So with that, I will turn this back over to you, Chair Robinson.
Are there any additional questions? Dr. Alkins?
Yes, this is probably less, definitely less of a question just for us to consider as a committee. That, and it goes back to, now that, think about it, it goes back to the discussion we were having earlier today about sort of the 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 M O U and sort of with our, with an incoming superintendent. And that we've done a lot of community engagement. And so community has really given their 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 voice and their opinions on what needs to be in the the values that are that are in a new superintendent. And so to some, in some respects, almost, I don't, like, we have to figure out some way that the M O U can sort of be made public in some regard. Because, I mean, it's, we can't just simply just have all this community engagement and then from a memorandum of understanding, turn around and basically say like, well, we're going to go in this other completely like different direction that doesn't, that hasn't taken necessarily into account what the community has said. So I just want to put that out there to the committee as something to keep in mind. Just for us, just, I don't know what pressure we we essentially can put, but sort of really thinking about that, like, yeah, an M O U should be made public if if that's the case that we're, if that's the direction we're going. And thank you for the report, Dr. Edinger. Thank you.
You're very welcome. And thank you for your background for acknowledging Asian-American and Pacific Islander heritage.
Thank you. Mr. Cade Hernandez.
All right. I guess two questions. One, in terms of the candidates, so if I'm understanding this right, there's about eight folks you are selecting for first-round interviews?
We we have, we have not landed on that number. And see, one of the things that we want to be sure is that that if a brilliant candidate shows up tomorrow, right? We do not want to say, oh, you missed the deadline by by two, by two minutes, right? It's not that kind of, it's an executive search. So we we've probably landed on around twenty percent, which is usually the first cut. And and we're mindful of that. So we're hovering around that number. So yes, I mean, what you're imagining is the direction that we're going.
Okay, that's, that makes sense. And but we haven't identified the folks for that first round, that's fair to say.
We have.
Okay. And then of the back, is there any more detail you can give us around like what that pool looks like?
Um, well, as I had said in my report, if you go back to the job description, the the these candidates had gone through a round of answering initial questions. And that is one of the ways that the committee used to 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 try to see if they're responsive initially to what we're asking for. So that's a large part of that initial selection criteria. And I think Ms. Mr. O'Neill has said it best during the committee. He says, you know, for this round, we're really looking at folks whom we would like to have a conversation with because they have met these initial understanding of what the job description is about, and they've responded to that. And it is the next round where we get to dig deeper, all right, to to understand more details and so on and so forth. And when I say that the the poll is balanced and diverse, both in gender and race and ethnicity, is exactly that. We we are, we are very mindful about the fact that we are representing a diverse community that's looking for that kind of representation, both in skills and experience, but also in in reflecting culture and reflecting that diversity. So so we're very mindful.
That's helpful. Thank you. I guess in the process, I'm curious, when do, when does the sort of background check, and I don't mean this in sort of like.
And it's okay. Because that is very important, right? Because you're engaging in in a relationship that's going to shape the the lives of our children. So background check is absolutely an okay word to use. It's reference check that that.
I'm thinking reference, and I'm thinking, you know, like off-list and on-list references. Like, how do we go and 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 when does that start to happen?
I think, I think it goes, I think it happens all through the process. And in the initial acceptance of the applications, the 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 search consultants have already begun to engage, right, in finding out about the backgrounds and the stories of 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 these folks who have applied. There is, I believe, there is a very formalized process that generates multiple pages of stuff. That's important to inform not only the search committee's work, but the work, well, later on of of your work and in the, because you're doing the finalist interviews. So those things will inform, inform that process. It, reference checking on and off list and also checking with groups, not only individuals, but groups that these candidates work with is always important. But one thing that we're very clear with our search committee is the importance of confidentiality, because folks are literally risking their career, right, in applying with us. And that. And that, um, that we do not as committee members um, go out to call people on our own um, without hewing to a protocol. Um, so we're mindful of that too. And, and that preserves the integrity of the search uh, to a large degree. So.
Of course. Thank you for the report. I, this is outside of your um, your purview, but I am just going to say what, and I feel like I sound like a broken record in these meetings around the issue. But I think it is time and maybe it is at our next school committee meeting for us to start having the conversation about what an interim superintendent will look like. Even if we make an offer, we have to have a superintendent. And the timeline, there are time, there may be a time gap between the person being able to start and Dr. Salius's departure. Um, and so I think, I don't, I am assuming that is under our, our purview chair. Um, even if it's around the interim placement. So I'm just um, curious when that conversation will make its way here and uh, and when we start having it so that that person, particularly I'm imagining an interim being someone who is already within the system can begin transitioning into that role and um, and transitioning their, their, their current workload so that they can realize the job even if it's in short term.
There has been talk about it. We have not moved on it because we're really waiting for the search process to do their process. And basically, once we have indication from the search committee as to how they are doing and if they feel they are meeting their timeline and what that might look like, I think at that point we will have fuller discussions. And we will be doing that in, in collaboration with the district and with the mayor's office. Um, to determine that. So it's still, you know, you know, we, we have, it's been in the back of my conversations numerous times over this past couple of months and um, I've been asked to hold on and to allow the process to do what it is set up to do, and that's what we're doing. So no, we, you know, it's not like it's not on people's thoughts. It's just not the moment yet to activate that next step.
I hear you. My only push, this is my loving push, is that even if we meet our deadline, I, I'm a, I'm not a betting guy, but like I would bet big on this if I was in Vegas. Even if we meet our timeline and we get a superintendent, we will
Still will need an interim process.
We're gonna need an intro.
Oh, yes. Yeah, we, we, we will have a transition process that the, the district is already working on. Um, you know, you know, I said, I'm the kind of per, you know, you know me, I'm the kind of person that tries to work within the systems and trying to allow people to do their jobs and not jump over them with my own anxiety or anxiousness to get the next step down. So don't worry. I have pressed Mr. O'Neal many times around the issue of um, don't forget we need, you know, we, we need to work with this. So it's happening.
So, and the only thing I will add here is two pieces. One is we've got about a month. And two, the people, the people on the ground who work in schools every single day deserve to know who that is. Not as the sort of last minute announcement, but with just a proper runway so they can wrap their heads around this. This, there has been enough instability and uncertainty on a school level and that level of information, whoever it is, that's going to be the interim through, uh, for a month, for two months, for five months. Like educators, principals, school leaders, assistant superintendents, they deserve to know and like I think we're late in just delivering that information on, on May 25th.
But Mr. Cardet Hernandez, I, one of the reasons why um, this process has been so strict and, and you know, in some ways, uh, we, we run these meetings um, with almost a draconian hand is because we want to make sure that we deliver something clean. Right? That there are no controversies, that we follow both our values in our heart and the process. And that we move forward as, as a subcommittee of the parent committee. And um, those dates that I cited today, they will be hewed to. Or there will be a price to pay. And, and I think in some ways, um, because we've been so disciplined within this committee and we have such amazing committee members, that, that you will have time to run um, the second, really the second phase, right, of the engagement. Um, every executive search I have ever chaired that I have ever been in, uh, once you've identified a candidate, then it's a process of really mutual working. Um, and you, you would want someone who is going to be your superintendent to be part of that conversation about developing the interim process, right? So I, I, I I want to, I want to reassure that we're doing the very best that we can.
And I know you. I hope you know that I know you are and I'm also, what I'm saying is actually outside of your purview. It's
Of course.
He's got a timeline that will require us to have an interim, even if for the short term.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And we have to, we have to be intellectually honest with folks about that. And we have to deliver that information to school leaders and assistant superintendents. Now it's the right thing to do. They should know who's going to be the placeholder while, till this person starts. It's, it's just fair, given everything they've been through.
So don't schedule any summer vacations. There will be none.
We can do it remote. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Gracias por el reporte y gracias al trabajo que está haciendo este comité de búsqueda. Se reuniéndose en persona. Yo sé que muchas veces es difícil y aprecio mucho ese trabajo que ustedes están haciendo.
De nada.
Mi intérprete no dijo nada, pero hay que
Yeah. Give me a second, Rafa. Thank you for your report. Uh, thank you for the information that you gave us.
Yo quiero saber que entendí bien. De los treinta y cuatro candidatos, ustedes ya seleccionaron ocho? Es mi pregunta.
Um, I want, I don't know if I understood correctly. From the thirty four candidates, you selected already eight?
Um, we, we, we selected a number somewhere around seven or eight because we are not quite sure um, if there will be more excellent candidates that may come, even though it's slightly later. Um, so I don't want to say to you, there will just be eight or just be seven, because that number may change. It may go up a little or people may withdraw. But we're landing about twenty percent of the, of the pool. Right? Which is about the right number when you go on to a second phase.
Are there any more questions? All right. If not, I want to thank you, Dr. Edinger um, for the report. Um, we are looking forward to the next update. So thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Okay. I will now ask the staff to invite Dr. Cassilius back to, into rejoining the meeting. So now we will move on to public comments on reports, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you Chair. We have one speaker for public comment on reports, Charlie Kim.
Hello?
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, I'm Charlie Kim, North End resident and the treasure of SpedPAC. Tonight, my comments will in the Office of Special Education. It has me confused, sad and upset that families and SpedPAC leadership have been marginalized and stigmatized recently and historically. The root of this unacceptable culture is hubris. Hubris is excessive pride that leads to bias, abuse of power, the mocking of families in emails and the manipulation of meeting notes to assert oneself. Tonight, a direct example of hubris is the $313,000 grant for ARP IDEA, early childhood you passed without exception. The Office of Special Education submitted this to you with no strategic plan and possibly shortsightedness driving the decisions. On May 9th, SpedPAC was informed by the exiting special advisor that she was working on a DESI waiver to expand sub-separate ABA programs for three-year-olds. This backdoor process is a complete disregard for internal controls overseeing academic delivery and family engagement long-term. You may have approved a one-year grant, creating a long-term ABA service delivery problem for thirty-three kids. The DESI and Mission Hill reports clearly state the failure in special education stems from weak governance, significant failures in, in internal controls and an unacceptable culture. I agree with the DESI report. And I, uh, but I completely disagree with the Commissioner Riley's comments yesterday at the two hour and twenty-one minute mark saying, some people said the problems have been going on for decades. I think that may be true. Just saying that may be true means he does not agree. Even Commissioner Riley is not immune to hubris. In my personal opinion, Commissioner Riley's urgency is not for special education, but for the $300 million ESER funds, he says is unclaimed. Boston should do everything in her power to make sure Commissioner Riley does not gain control over our $300 million. The Wall Street Journal reported last week, ninety-three percent of the $122 billion of ESER's money is unclaimed nationwide. It's not just BPS. Commissioner Riley is wrong. I want to close by saying, I strongly believe this school committee and BPS has the ability to drive change, but you may need help removing the barriers in special education to allow change. Tomorrow, SpedPAC will elect next year's board on a public Zoom. I will ask the new board to publish a list of bad actors in the Office of Special Education and the PRS reports and emails supporting the bad actors' determinations from BPS as exemplified in Ms. Harvey and Ms. Bazil's public comments tonight. I'm calling for this publication because we have families should help you activate the good and caring people in BPS to embrace change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for public comment.
Thank you. Is there any new business?
Um, yes, from the standpoint of just making sure that we're following up on the things that, again, as always, following up on what we've heard uh, this evening, um, obviously, um, with the comments shared by, you know, Ms. Harvey, Ms. Bazil and their experience, but also the experience of uh, Ms. Dora um, with her um, um, son, uh, like I believe in, um, just making sure that there is a consistent source of communication there. Um, I don't know what, I mean, individually, I mean, what, what, what we can do, but I'm sure you know, everyone here is on it. Um, but you know, I, I wouldn't be doing my, my job, you know, if I didn't just raise the issue again. And we'll continue to do so.
Yes. And Superintendent, in our next meeting, can you provide a follow-up to the concerns that we heard this evening with regard to the bullying and those other issues?
I can, to an extent, I can tell you that they have been addressed, uh, could, uh, and um, I will uh, consult with our legal office on what can and cannot be shared. Um, unfortunately, sometimes things are um, spoken to in public comment that I'm not able to speak to. I can also uh, say that we are also following up and have been following up uh, at, when we, when we were in receipt of the concerns um, from Ms. Bazil and um, Ms. Harvey.
Thank you. Yeah. Often these things are very difficult, I understand, but just wanting to make sure that we reiterate, I know it's often hard because we sit and we listen a lot in public is not sure that we are taking action. Um, that we are doing more than just sitting and listening. So just want to raise it up that we, we often bring these things directly to the district and may get feedback, but need to be transparent in allowing the public to know, even if we can give details. But that issues are being addressed.
I also just want to state that um, I too have been extremely concerned with sub-separate settings. As you know, it's been part of my um, focus these past three years. Um, it is highly complex um, in terms of the IEP meetings, the settings that children have, the undoing of those settings that they've been in for sometimes multiple years. Um, and the challenges that go with, with that and the programming and the way that it's assigned within this, within the Boston Public Schools. There is an immense amount of unpacking that needs to happen systemically um, for that to occur and um, I'm eager to share with the next superintendent who let's hope is not managing a global health crisis next fall um, and is able to establish the right leadership team in place in order to address these very significant and complex issues throughout the organization.
Thank you. Any final comments? If not, that concludes
No, no, and I, and I just wanted to say like, also just thank you to everybody that's, that's, that's on the call. The, the continued effort is, um, not, and not just for the, the, the issues that we, we just named, but for oh, everything that was brought up in public comment, um, and, and the continued effort to, to, to rectify things, but to also be looking forward and proactively um, change the system for the better. So I appreciate everyone on this call for, for the tireless work that y'all do. So.
Thank you. Right, if that, that concludes our business for this evening. The next remote school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, June 8th at 5:00 PM. There's nothing further. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the role?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera? Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you and good night.